Good afternoon, everyone. We'll start our meeting, Santa Barbara City Council, November 20, 2018. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Dominguez. Mayor Potem Rouse. Councilmember Hart. Councilmember Sneddon. Councilmember Gutierrez. Mayor Mario.
Here. Super. Okay, we'll start with our ceremonial item. Madam Clerk?
Item number one, subject: World AIDS Day, December 1, 2018.
Pleasure to see you, Mr. Kaufman-Grey. You served on our Transportation and Circulation Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Among your other activities. So, World AIDS Day, December 1, 2018. Whereas December 1 is recognized internationally as World AIDS Day, and whereas in the local Santa Barbara community, men and women of all ages continue to be infected with HIV, and whereas groups like The Quilt Project, Gold Coast, and Pacific Pride Foundation, and others are working hard to educate both the general public and at-risk communities to bring the infection rate to zero, and whereas this government recognizes the need to educate and inform all communities, including the Latino and migrant populations of Santa Barbara, of the dangers from HIV and AIDS, and whereas it is hoped that one day there will be a vaccine to cure those of the HIV virus that causes AIDS, and whereas the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the importance of programs dedicated to creating a better quality of life for those infected with HIV and AIDS, now therefore I, Kathy Mario, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim December 1, 2018, as World AIDS Day, and encourage community members to participate in awareness opportunities and show compassion to those affected by HIV/AIDS. Thank you. There you go. And say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mayor and councilmembers. As you know, my name is Keith Kaufman-Grey, and I am president of Quilt Project Gold Coast. We want to thank the city of Santa Barbara for recognizing December 1 is International World AIDS Day in the city of Santa Barbara. Quilt Project Gold Coast has been displaying AIDS memorial quilts throughout Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties over the past two months. The AIDS memorial quilts are made to remember those who have died and to educate that HIV/AIDS is still here, and unfortunately, infection rates are on the rise. This year, we are displaying four 12-foot-by-12-foot panels from the National Names Project Foundation, representing 32 quilts. The majority of these quilts are of area residents who have died from AIDS, and were made by Names Project Ventura County in the 1990s. Quilt Project Gold Coast was formed this year as a response to the increase in the new infection rates to educate and to remember those who have died by making new quilts and showing quilts made in the past. On December 1, candlelight vigils will be held around the world to commemorate the 30th International World AIDS Day. Quilt Project Gold Coast will be displaying its quilts at two area vigils. The first, on November 29, at 4:00 p.m. at Cal Lutheran, will be hosting its annual World AIDS Day observance, and then on December 1, Quilt Project, at 5:00 p.m., will be at the Heritage Square in Oxnard, hosted by Diversity Collective, and they will be having their World AIDS Day candlelight vigil. Thank you again for recognizing December 1 is International World AIDS Day. Now, my partner, husband Neil, did bring a quilt. If you'd like to see what they look like.
It's beautiful.
This is a typical quilt, and like I say, we have 32 of these that we're displaying right now, and we're in the process of making more that we'll be showing next year.
Thank you. Thank you for your root.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.[431.12][431.12](applause) That concludes our ceremonial item. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are actually two changes to the consent calendar. Item three regarding the adoption of resolution for additional property-assessed clean energy programs, that's item three, and item number six, the approval of the parcel map and execution of agreements for 1236 San Andres Street. Both of those we will continue and bring back at a later meeting for some technical cleanups.
Okay. That moves us to public comment. This is your opportunity to speak to us on matters that are not on our agenda, and please know that we can't really get into a back-and-forth with you to comply with the Brown Act. You can make appointments with us. Holly, well, there she is. Pareya, our executive assistant in the back of the room, can make appointments with city councilmembers, or direct you to city staff to answer your questions. And we have a change in your public comment opportunity. We now allow you to speak for three minutes instead of two. So, please come up. Cassandra Enzberg, you're first. And Selena Tuttle and Elizabeth Salke?
Savage.
Savage, okay, sorry. Please, yeah, let us know. Sam Edelman will be after you. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Mario and City Council. It's wonderful to see you all, and I'm Cassandra Enzberg. I'm an architect. I'm here about the Kids Draw Architecture calendars, and I'm the chair of the committee, and with me are other committee members. Selinda Tuttle, who is our executive, our president-elect for the Architectural Foundation, and Elizabeth Savage are both here with me. Elizabeth is a, was a former sketcher for Kids Draw Architecture, and she also was honored with a scholarship from the foundation, and is now working on our committee and works for the Cornell Collective as a designer, so she's a great example of our successes.
Great.
So, we're here together to bring you the 2019 KDA calendar, representing Kids Draw Architecture program, and our partners, the Architectural Foundation and the AIA Santa Barbara. The 2019 calendars feature sketches from the bowl and from the county courthouse, sketch sessions that were in 2018. The drawings are delightful and informative, and for the first time, the architect mentor drawings are included in the back, in the part that's the tear-out postcards, and it's really interesting to see kind of the whole spectrum of drawings. Santa Barbara is known for its architecture and appreciates the importance of design excellence in the "our-built" environment, and for over 30 years, the Kids Draw Architecture program has helped us to learn and see about architecture and design through the simple act of sketching, and sketching important landmark buildings. Our most important buildings are the ones we always focus on. Next year, we will be at the first time at the Alameda Park Bandshell, and also at the old Jefferson Campus School on APS, which is now Santa Barbara Middle School, and we'll be there on March 9 and April 13. They're in the calendars, so for you and all the public, please do come. So, please be enjoyed, please enjoy and be inspired by the calendar all year, and join us on December 2. December 2, the annual Kids Draw Architecture Show and Reception will be at the Atchison House from 2 to 4. And with that, happy Thanksgiving and our best to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, all three of you. Thanks. Sam Edelman, come on up.
Hello. It's good to be back here. I think I've kind of come off a little bit of the initial shock from the last time I was here, and I just want to say that we have had some very positive dialogue with the city regarding the situation with the police station and the farmer's market. Of course, I'm still incredibly concerned about the fate of the farmer's market, and just want to continue this open dialogue. I've had the pleasure of speaking with some of you individually, and like to just kind of continue down a very positive path. I do still adamantly feel that the farmer's market location that we're in is the best situated for the farmer's market, and would really encourage everybody that hasn't been down there in a while to just kind of walk around in a few-block radius and kind of visualize the parking lots, see where people are coming in, where the traffic flow is coming in, and sort of what it takes to make this thing successful. You know, we have gone around and looked at other potential sites that have been asked to look at from the city, and some of them have seemed somewhat viable with some renovations, possibly like a De La Gara Plaza would mean a lot of work, but it's doable, but you also have to kind of consider the sizes of the vehicles and the trucks and the traffic flow and the people and the parking and just the overall access. So, I just want to thank you all for kind of the interactions. I know you've received a lot of emails, and there's been a lot of press in the last couple weeks, but we really want to just keep this positive and really just make sure that we do the right thing. We just have to make sure this works, and if it's not in the commuter lot, it has to work somewhere else, and just making sure we have some sort of plan in place moving forward if this is the fate of the market, because obviously, this is a major community event. I know you guys all are aware of this, so, thanks. That's about it, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mr. Rouse has a question or a comment?
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Casey. So, Mr. Casey, that was an interesting thought. I mean, is the, I know we've talked about renovating the De La Gara Plaza before, is that a possibility to have a look at that? Is a possibility for the?
Is it appropriate to talk about something that's not on the agenda?
I'll just ask you a quick question.
To that extent?
Just super sorting. It's one of the sites that we've worked with the farmer's market to look at, and I think it's intriguing.
Okay. So, Mr. Edelman, we're continuing to work with you. Thank you. Mark Sheridan, you're next. You'll be followed by Phil Walker, Anna Marie Gott, Lee Muldiver, and Christine Neuhauser. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to open by apologizing for anything personal that was said over your voicemail. I assure you, I was venting my frustration with your process that was followed last week. The decision to move forward with the HEAP grant funding, and most importantly, the Housing Authority's proposal for Housing 40 of the most vulnerable and service-using individuals of the homeless population. Questions were asked, options were brought forward, and city staff obfuscated and only had vague answers with the excuse the timing was so limited. Each time a project change was suggested, the excuse by staff were the points required, a big project, that this was not able to be changed, and besides, they really didn't need to come before the council for such a grant, but did it out of a courtesy. We have an example of the tail wagging the dog. Who is making your policies? For example, we are getting rid of the commuter lots with this proposal. In Santa Barbara, where do the hundreds of commuters park in our downtown neighborhoods? Who made that decision that we're getting rid of the commuter lots? No one knows. My understanding, the HEAP grant funding was from the state for the entire county of Santa Barbara, and to support programs from Santa Maria to Carpinteria. Santa Barbara City's proposal is what I call legally-piggly. The lion's share would go to the city of Santa Barbara grant, with a small amount left over for the rest of the county. The proposal you approved is too big, and unfortunately, it will fail. And what happens after the 30 months, when the money is gone? What nearby businesses will be closed? How will property values be affected? And, on your public comment pooling rules, opportunity, the mayor says. I don't agree with your cutting in half from 10 minutes max to a five-minute is a move forward in keeping the dialogue open with the public. Please remember, many people can't be here, a lazy afternoon meeting. Where is the voice for the people who can't be here? I'm self-employed, so I can adjust my work hours. Doesn't mean I don't lose my hourly pay. Be patient with the community. Let them speak freely, and look for the ideas and aspirations in their words.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Sheridan, Holly in the back has a flyer about the HEAP grant. We're having a community meeting on Wednesday, November 28, 5:30 p.m. at the Louise Laurie-Davis Center. Thank you. Mr. Walker, your turn.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. I understand I have three minutes. Didn't expect it, but that's great, members of the city council. I had to shift gears, car wouldn't start, but then it'll be going to carburetor electric. I've had a trail of tears with it for the last four months. Got through smog, and still things are going wrong, electrical, transient shorts, they cause problems. On Friday afternoon, probably 12 to 12:30, you know, I walked down to Crown Liquor, not to partake of any brewskies or anything, but purchased an LA Times. It's still a good read. Between the time I walked into Crown, right before that, a fellow blew through the red light, turning left or south onto Milpus Street, and if anybody got help, him was in that crosswalk, it would have been very serious, because he was moving at speed. Then, walking out, I saw the same darn thing, another vehicle, a hopped-up Mustang, and he was really moving, and possibly, they could extend the yellow and have a no-walk little man, or put a camera there and at least get some indication, because it is dangerous, you know? And they had to, actually, my car broke down on Old Coast Highway, coming right out of the roundabout, and that is another dangerous place. I'm sure there's no parking. I've walked it before, all the way out to Sido Coast Village, and my car broke down right on the crest of the first rides coming out of the roundabout going west, and it was scary. I was right over, and the oncoming car going from east to west would not have visibility, so I pushed it off the road on the shoulder, but I think I busted or bruised a toe very bad, but, you know, it just hurt for a while, but I can see why people have bad wrecks on that thing, and that takes some study, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Marie Gott, you'll be followed by Lee Muldiver, Christine Neuhauser. Robert Burke is our final speaker. Thanks.
You should all have some information in front of you. City Council, yesterday, 7/11 North Milpus was at the ABR, and as you know, that particular project has been denied in a 3-2 vote. I want to remind you of a few things. In 2017, the city attorney actually told us during a number of short-term vacation rental appeals here at city council, that reversing out onto a public street for commercial use is not allowed. There is no one in the Public Works Department, the Transportation Department, Community Planning, or Building and Safety, or city council, that can allow a vehicle to reverse out onto a street. That is why you denied, in part, two vacation rentals. They were at 217 Bass Street and 812 Jennings. In 2016, the staff hearing officer had before it two separate parking changes for 7/11 North Milpus. If you take a look at this particular sheet of paper, it says there's a parking modification for 94 parking spaces, from down from 100, and a front setback modification that would allow 13 perpendicular parking places to reverse out onto a public street. That was Ortega. At the time, the staff hearing officer was unaware that she was not allowed to grant that modification. Turn to the back of the page, and you will find that there are some terms and conditions on that modification. It says in number six, the staff hearing officer's action approving the modification shall expire in two years from the date of approval, which was April 27, 2016. That would have meant that it expired in April 27, 2018, unless a building permit was issued, which none had been, or an extension was granted and approved by the staff hearing officer, if they were diligently trying to move forward with construction. No approval had been given, no modification was asked for in the reduction of parking, yet staff has been pushing 7/11 North Milpus through the ABR. They are not allowed to use an ordinance that no one could have waived, given them a waiver for. Yet, we have had multiple meetings about this. I urge you to ask the city attorney to find out if this is even possible to do. Thank you.
Thanks. Lee Muldiver? And Bonnie Raisin is our last speaker. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Lee Muldiver, speaking on behalf of the Citizens Planning Association. Fifty-eight years young, and getting younger and stronger every day. Wanted to remind you all, including Mr. Casey, if he's not doing a meeting, about our year-end holiday meeting on noon, Monday, December 3, at the Hill Correo Adobe. Hopefully, some or all of you, mindful of the Brown Act, will be able to join us for a great program and some award recognition and some refreshments. Beyond that, I was thinking about the 1,000-plus full and part-time city workers, and I wanted to take a moment from the Planning Association to pay tribute to the Assistant City Attorney, Scott Vincent, who's going to be leaving. When you're the attorney in charge of land use, environment, planning, design, that whole gamut of legal advice, it means you're inserting yourself into complex and often controversial situations, and happily, in the city of Santa Barbara, we still are a community of laws and not people, and Scott, even when he offered rulings I didn't understand or agree with at the moment, has always tried to be tactful, factual, legal-based, common-sense-based, with a view to the longer-term history of the city and of justice for all in the process. And so, I hope the city attorney recovers quickly and fully from his health adventures. I want to thank Scott and wish him well in the future, and I would like to wish the council and all 1,000-plus employees of the city a safe and great and happy Thanksgiving Thursday and through the weekend. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Christine, I'm sorry, Bonnie, Christine Neuhauser, then Robert Burke, and then you, Bonnie. Yeah. Ms. Neuhauser, come on up.
Hi. Sorry about this. I was going to give minutes to Anna Marie, but didn't realize it had changed already, so I was doing laundry. I wanted to remind you of a short-term rental that was denied. There was a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the decision of the Architectural Board of Review to deny a development plan for the conversion of an existing residential unit located at 2017 Bass Street to a short-term rental. So, that was denied. Santa Barbara Municipal Code, Section 28.90.045.1, states that backing out onto a public street is only permitted for one-family and two-family dwelling uses. Backing out onto a public street is not allowed for a commercial use. This relates to 7/11 North Milpus, which, I live on the east side, and care about the east side and all the people over there, including myself. 7/11 North Milpus got a modification in 2016, and it was to reverse out onto the public street, that section of Ortega that goes from the high school to Milpus Street, and that was done, the modification was given in error, because it was, anyway. So, the modification that was issued expired for 27 of 18. The parking and this modification that expired, it was parking reversing out onto Ortega Street. You can't do that because it's commercial. All right? I want to remind you of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Robert Burke? Oh, Mr. Dominguez has a question?
So, I'm interested, a few people have raised the issue. Madam City Attorney, is there a general rule against having backing out parking in commercial facilities?
Mayor Mario, Councilmember Dominguez, there, I think what the public is remembering is advice from the city attorney that related specifically to short-term rentals, and it was, the advice was that, and from council, that you could not back out and do tandem parking, but there is a section in Title 20 and Title 30 that allows for a waiver for backing out of commercial property.
And who would that waiver come from? The council?
It comes from the Public Works Director.
Public Works Director. Thank you.
Robert Burke?
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, members, pardon the hat, it's for warmth. What's he gonna say now? This Thanksgiving, this Christmas, make sure the turkey's on the table and not in the chair next to you. Madam Mayor, members.
Bonnie Raisin?
I apologize, because I thought that I had put item number nine.
Ah, duh. Here it is. We'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call up Eric Nickel. He's, was appointed or hired today as our new fire chief, and I'll hold you to three minutes.
I see the timer here. Madam Mayor, members of council, again, my name is Eric Nickel. I am your new fire chief. Thank you for appointing me or recommending city administrator Paul Casey's appointment. So, I come to you from working six years as the fire chief for the city of Palo Alto and Stanford University. Before that, I spent a very large portion of my career up in Marin County, so north of San Francisco, with the Nevado Fire District, and it's kind of unusual that I find myself back 100 miles away, less than 100 miles away, from where I started my fire service career, on a hot-shot crew, fighting forest fires on the Angeles National Forest 31 years ago. I've spent the bulk of my career working in agencies and communities that had very significant wildland-urban interface issues, and more importantly, very significant community engagement and community collaboration. I also have worked most of my career, except for the U.S. Forest Service for departments that, you know, very similar size, and what's important with that, as I shared with you earlier, is we have to collaborate, not only with the community to reduce the community's risk, but with other agencies in the area, because no one fire agency can stand alone. It's no secret that the climate is changing. It's no secret- It's no secret that these climate-driven weather extreme events, whether it's a fire, whether it's a rain event, or a fire immediately followed by a rain event like this community experienced last year, is, as Governor Brown said the other day, the new abnormal. And this will continue to go on. And my commitment to you and to this community is a multi-fold, with the most important piece being that community risk reduction. We have got to reduce the risk of devastating wildland fire that comes out of the forest, the vegetation, and into the built environment. So you will be seeing me back here preaching that mantra very frequently. I also come from a background of either working in managing or leading an ambulance-based, fire-based ambulance system. So I know that some of the chiefs in this county have been talking about that. Certainly, the county controls that, but that's something that is within, you know, my bailiwick. So Palo Alto was the only fire agency within a county of 2 million people that operated the ambulance service. And then the last piece is a, you know, regional dispatch or fire communication center. I know that there's been some talk about that, and we have had some similar experience. But I'm very excited to get started here. Usually, as a kid, you're counting down to Christmas. I'm counting down to January 14, when I can get down here, and then ultimately get my wife down here. So thank you for hiring me and look forward to getting started. I've got 15 seconds left.
Thank you. Welcome.
Great.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So that closes public comment, and we have some items remaining on consent calendar, even though we're rescheduling 3 and 6. Madam Clerk?
Item number two, subject: Adoption of Ordinance Regarding Westmont College Specific Plan Amendment for Affordable Housing in the City of Santa Barbara. Recommendation: That council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Section 30.110.040 of Chapter 30.110, Westmont College Specific Plan of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code, approving the Westmont amended and restated affordable housing agreement and authorizing the Community Development Director to execute the agreement.
That's it. Any items to pull from my colleagues? And if there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading, and I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar.
Move it.
From Hart and Rouse, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That looked unanimous with Eric Friedman gone today, so. That takes us to reports, both our ordinance committee and finance committee met today. Mr. Hart, why don't you start with the finance committee report?
The finance committee met today and considered the solid waste rate restructuring effort that staff has brought before the committee. It was a program to provide greater equity to solid waste bills and also simplify the billing process and the rate structure, create revenue stability, and align the city's policies with state law. And the finance committee unanimously agreed with the staff proposal, and the council will then see this built into the budget for next year. It'll come through the budget process, and there will be Prop. 218 noticing done at that time to inform the public, keep them engaged in the process, to understand how the rates are going to be changed to provide greater equity and simplification.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Sneddon from the ordinance committee?
Yes, we met today to discuss average unit size density incentive program, Phase One of the ordinance amendments, and recommend it onto council additional parking for units of three or more bedrooms outside the central business district, no conversion of AUDs to hotels, and to remove the AUD development incentives from mobile home parks.
Very good. And that'll come back to us?
Yes.
To the full council?
It will come back after our full council discussion, the first week in December.
December 4?
Yes.
Okay.
When we're talking about the full AUD program.
Thank you. And item number nine, Madam Clerk?
Item number nine, subject: Measure C Annual Accountability Report.
So it looks like our finance director is getting ready. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Bob Samario, Finance Director. I'm here with Amanda Flessy. She is a principal civil engineer in the Public Works Department, and she'll cover a portion of this report. It's not a long report, but I think it's important for us to kind of go through this in the spirit of the ballot measure and the intent to be transparent with the Measure C funds. So quick background, in November of 17, the voters did approve Measure C, which added a 1% or 1 cent sales tax effective April 1 of 2018. So to keep that in perspective, this report is really an abbreviated version of what we're going to see in the future, since we're only dealing with one quarter's worth of revenues and activities. On an annual basis, we do expect that we're going to get somewhere in the neighborhood of $22 million, based on the fact that that's about what we're getting on our base 1%. And the proceeds will be used to fund critical infrastructure, so that's street sidewalks, street lighting, a police station, and then other city facilities. So part of, with, part of Measure C was that we're requirement that we form a seven-member citizens oversight committee, which was done, and its purpose is to ensure that the Measure C revenues are in fact spent as intended. And it also requires that we present and prepare a Measure C annual accountability report. As its name implies, it's done once a year, and it's intended eventually to be pretty comprehensive once we get a full years of activity in there. But it does provide a detailed accounting of all the Measure C revenues and a detailed description by project of how the monies have been funded and will be spent. That is also to be presented to the Oversight Committee and made available to the public through our website and through meetings like this. And you can see the location where we have created a new website dedicated just to Measure C. It was created by staff in Public Works, IT, and Finance. If you haven't been there, it's a great place to hear, read about projects and works, but projects that are budgeted and a lot of related activity related to Measure C and information. So we're really happy with that one. So in this, based on the requirements, we did present to the Oversight Committee at their first meeting, this annual accountability report that was on September 26. We also posted it to the newly created Measure C webpage. And it, again, as I mentioned, it really only covers part of the year, so it's since April 1 of 2018, so it's three or four months' worth of activity. So I'm just going to go through a couple of slides that show the numbers. This is on the revenue side, so this is the revenues that we budgeted. And keep in mind, we budgeted this earlier on, and we estimated, based on what we are getting and expected to get on the base 1%, we estimated $5.5 million. In reality, and you might have read about it in the paper today, that we only received about $5.3 million, so we're short about 1.2. And more recently, we've learned what caused this difference. We thought it was because of the fact that it's the new tax, and maybe businesses hadn't set up appropriately their point-of-sale systems to adjust for the new tax rate. But what we discovered is that a large portion of this variance is due to the fact that the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration that overtook the State Board of Equalization had systems problems, system problems where they were having businesses report on paper forms, so not electronically, so on paper forms, which took a lot more time for their staff to process. So they have been very, very behind in processing those, and therefore, the payments to the various agencies have been behind. So we estimate that about $800,000 of this variance is due to the fact that we are, they just underpaid us during this period. We're expecting it this fiscal year, so it's good, but, so that'll true it up, but at least it's money that we're going to give back. The difference between that 800 and the rest of it, we're not really sure. It could be just because general sales taxes have been a little bit flatter than we expected. And maybe there was a little bit of noncompliance where, as I mentioned earlier, maybe some businesses in fact did not get a chance to adjust their point-of-sale system. But the large portion of this variance is due to essentially a timing difference from the state in terms of their payment to us. And I apologize because it's probably difficult to read this, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Flessy, and she'll cover the uses of the funds of the projects. But you, this should be in your attachment and your handouts.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to address the two projects funded through the Measure C program. First is the police station. It was budgeted $350,000. For the time period, we only expended approximately $88,000. That was basically to get started with Cordell Collectives for our needs assessment of the police station, and then staff time for the consultant selection period. Then we moved on to our streets, capital improvement projects. First, we procured equipment, and of that equipment, it was a roller, a caterpillar roller, which is pretty essential in laying down the pavement for our streets force. The paving that our streets crews did was approximately $306,000. And during that course of the year, they were able to do some high, some Gibraltar Road, which was necessary for the bikers right before the, the...
Amgen.
Amgen, thank you. And then also some other various streets that were in desperate need. Then we moved on to our capital improvement project and our overlays. And during that period, we awarded the major $4 million project, but we only spent actual expenditures up to that time period of $150,000. So since then, we have yet, we have completed that project. Some major projects, some major roads in that project were Bath and Castillo, along with, with Lacumbre and Quinientos and Canada and Ortega Streets.
Councilmember Dominguez has a question?
So there was $4 million allocated to grind and overlay, and we only spent $150,000. Were there some reasons for a delay?
It was all the way up to June 30, and so our project barely started in June. So we completed our project in September.
And keep in mind that we got the money coming in in April, and we have to award the contracts, get things rolling. But it was all completed, as Ms. Flessy indicated, in September. That's just the nature of whenever you get the money, you've got to award the contract. That always takes a couple of months to get started.
These are contractors doing the grind and overlay, not?
Yes.
City staff?
Correct.
So we don't pay them until it's done? Is that, there's a lag in the money being spent? This is more of a cash-based, not an accrual-based?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just to point out that attached to the report, your agenda report, is the actual annual accountability report. And as you'll see, it not only provides these summary schedules, but for each of these projects, there's a page that's dedicated to describing what the project entails, what streets are being worked on and the like. And that'll be consistent what we'll see in the future. So I think it's a good report in that regard. When we met with the Oversight Committee, they had some recommendations. They reviewed the report and had some suggested changes in some, in terms of the report and the meeting itself. And so this is a summary of those recommendations. One is, we at a staff level intended to meet twice a year, at the end of a fiscal year, and then checking in mid-year, kind of where we're at with the new year. They'd asked to meet more frequently, quarterly for now, and we were fine with that. We were more than happy to provide them the information they would like to see. So we'll be meeting quarterly. In fact, we had a second meeting with about a month after the first, just to go over some other information that we wanted to present, and they wanted to hear. The other was, they, in fact, one of the things they wanted to hear was a presentation on the potential sites of a new police station and information on cost estimates, and we did that. That was the crux of the second meeting. We went over that. Brad Hess, the project manager or planner, presented that. And then with regard to the annual accountability report, they asked that we incorporate, when the data's available, PCI information. They wanted to see a correlation between the amount of money being spent on pavement and the PCI, which is a rating of the condition of our roads. And so we will provide that to them at the next meeting. And then they also wanted to add on to the summary schedule, you saw a, some kind of an indication as to what level of commitments are within those budgeted amounts. We award contracts. Some of the monies may not have been awarded, so how much is really available for additional work? So we're just going to add one more column to the schedule you saw to show how much essentially is encumbered and what's not encumbered, and also show which ones are pre-completed and which are not completed, where we may be able to reprogram some of those monies. So we'll be incorporating those recommendations into the next report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're really here just for you to accept the report and, again, to hear the recommendations of the committee.
Thanks. I don't see any lights. We have one public comment speaker? No question? Maybe two? Bonnie Raisan, come on up.
Well, Bonnie Raisan, I hope the public watching this will have some questions because I don't feel that a 1-cent increase in the sales tax, which purportedly was to go to infrastructure and salaries, we knew that, and yet, it may not sound like a lot, but I think 1-cent sales tax that was supposed to go to, for maintenance and repair of sidewalks and streets, and I haven't seen any activity. Bath Street is half-paved. I mean, it's like a glass half-full. What is going on? And the sidewalks, you know, if there's a map of where they're working on sidewalks, that would be helpful, anything. But, but, but sort of, you know, brushing off the fact that the people in this community are paying 1 cent more for groceries and items and so forth and so on. But I think what also the public needs to have explained to them is if an increase in the wages of city employees was part of this deal, then we, well, I mean, I don't know. But if it was, if there was an increase based on the passage of this sales tax, and if I'm wrong, then shame on me, but if I'm not wrong, and there has been an increase based on the revenues, we need to know that. But mostly, I am just shocked. I see no activity whatsoever fixing what was promised to us. I've been talking about this for so long that I feel, you know, it's falling on deaf ears, but except for the Upper East Side, which is gorgeous, you know, that was done, and portions of the city, yes, but nothing of the magnitude that would have necessitated us buying in to a 1-cent sales tax increase. So we need more. I mean, I'm trying to figure out, you know, and read between the lines of this brief presentation, but I haven't been able to do so. So I don't know how you can convey this. I don't know how many people watch these meetings, but I, I think that I don't speak just for myself. So thank you for your attention and appreciate.
Councilmember Sneddon has a question for you.
Yeah. Actually, a question and a comment. So it, in our, in our board report, there are lists of streets that are completed all throughout the city with photographs, and I'm wondering, how is this publicly available? What would be the best way to be able to see this list and for the public to know which projects are completed and which are underway?
The website?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, as I mentioned, so this report is just one small piece of what we're doing. I mentioned the Measure C website, so it's a really comprehensive website, so you can see project descriptions, but maps, locations of where all this works, but where they're going to be done. So the maps you see there is all on the webpage, so not only projects that were budgeted last year and started and completed, but new projects that are programmed this year, and it'll be an ongoing sort of addition, projects to, you know, and they'll come off essentially as completed, but you'll see a history of what would be done. But the maps are there, locations, all detailed descriptions of what's being done. I think it's a good resource.
Thank you.
And Mr. Samario, the Measure C committee meetings are open to the public?
They are.
I assume? And do list that on the website as well, because Ms. Raisan, I think, could attend those if she wanted to?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do post the minutes and the agendas of those Measure C committee oversight, committee meetings, so you can find the information there. Any materials we provide to them are also on that website.
Okay. And Mr. Dominguez?
And I did want to ask about Bath Street. On the list, it says, from Correo to Mitchell Terrine, it's been completed. And I know there is work further south between the freeway and maybe De La Guerra. Does anyone have the ability to tell us what's happening with Bath?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, Castillo was from Correo to Mitchell Terrine as well, and Castillo from Cabrillo to the 101 was addressed with the FY18 pavement, pavement, grind and overlay project. But Bath was not part of our project for FY18. And 19A has, is scheduled to begin in next month, in December.
What is scheduled to begin next month?
19A, which is the Slurry Seal Project.
And so is there part of Bath that's not finished yet?
Yes, all of Bath, only from Correo... Only from Correo to Mitchell Arena has been completed.
Okay, so they're gonna do a different part. But between Correo and Mitchell Arena, that part is finished?
Correct.
Okay.
Along with the sidewalks on that, on that street, on the street from Correo to Mitchell Arena.
And I guess the other question that's come up recently is the sewer laterals. Are we coordinating the sewer laterals so that we're not having streets redone and then having to dig them up to replace sewer laterals?
Yes, we are. Fortunately, we got out 18 so quickly, we weren't able to coordinate as fast. But with 19, we're able to coordinate and they are aware of what we're doing for 19A and 19B, which is the main, 19B is the grind and overlay. And they are noticing residents now for that, to get their sewer laterals fixed before we come in and pave the road.
And is there a website that they can check for that information?
It would be the same website. Measure C would be the same website.
So it's gonna have the schedule for sewer laterals?
Not for, not for sewer laterals. I'm, I'm not aware of the sewer lateral portion of, of everything. That's part of our wastewater teams.
Can we get you guys to coordinate and have the information cross-referenced on both websites? I imagine it's more important on the other website because people are going to Measure C or more looking at it in terms of accountability and oversight versus seeing what's happening on their particular street. But for the off chance someone is looking there for that information?
Mr. Dominguez, it looks like our Public Works Director might have an answer. We still have another comment, public speaker, so go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, sorry, I was out of the room. I got a cough and so I'm trying to spare you that. I didn't hear the full conversation, but I know our sewer lateral program is driven, much as our road program is, in terms of looking at, seeing obvious defects that we can see from within our own pipes, that we can see our problems in the private sewer laterals. We are working very hard to get out ahead of the roads we're planning on doing, well ahead of the roads we're planning on doing, to do inspections of the mains, to see if there are any laterals that need to be addressed. We're also really working and waiting for some of the information management systems that we're implementing in planning and in our operations division, to be able to link those and use those as sources of information about where work is happening. The challenge with the sewer laterals is that's private work, even though we're directing that it get done in order to protect public health and the environment and our, our portion of the system. It's being done and scheduled by private plumbers. And so that information isn't within our information systems. It will be in the permit plan information system. And we still are working with our IT department to get those to merge together into an integrated map. So we hope to have that in the not-too-distant future.
So how much time are we giving residents to do the sewer lateral work?
I don't know where we are on that exactly, but I had asked that we back off as much as possible so that we give people lead time to try and get that done. I, I think we were hoping for about a year.
Okay.
But I'm not entirely sure we are, where we are with that, on that today. We've had, part of the problem is that they continue, sewer laterals continue to be the biggest source of problems for us in terms of operating the city's wastewater system. So we, we need to balance, walk that, that tightrope pretty carefully because it's, it's really a balancing act.
Is that something we can get more information of, maybe at the budget? One of your budget sessions?
We can certainly give you more information on this, on the budget, but we can also give you an update when we do the annual collection system report. So at both of those opportunities, we can give you additional information.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Ms. Gott, thank you for waiting. Mr. Miranda, you're donating your time. So you have five minutes total.
Councilmembers, I attended the first Measure C meeting and someone happened to actually give me their handout from the meeting. That was the only way I was actually able to get the handout. I sent an email to the team dealing with Measure C, asking for a PDF. I never received a reply back. In terms of transparency, I think that's terrible. A member of the public asks you for a document so that I actually have a very good, clean copy and one that is, that I don't have to put on my scanner. I didn't get one. Those materials should be available to anyone when they asked, and that is not what happens. I'd like you to go ahead and take a look at page five and page six of your handout. If you actually look at the handout, it is not itemized by district. The amount is not itemized by district in terms of how much is spent. If you actually look up the information, District 1 and 6 are getting a lot of services. District 3, District 4, and District 5 are not. You are supposed to be representing your districts and the money is being disproportionately spent. There is no oversight of that. You should be demanding accountability and to understand how much money is being spent in each district so that this is equitable. Right now, it is not equitable. And no one who went ahead and voted for this thought that their district was going to be short-changed by a process that is more focused on the downtown than anywhere else in the city. We understand that the downtown, to some extent, needs a little bit more. But when people don't have sidewalks and where their sidewalks are, accident waiting to happen because of a trip and fall, where the sidewalk is one and two inches off-center, and they are worried about a few bricks downtown and evening a few bricks out, it boggles the mind in terms of why we would be spending money on a few bricks so that they could be flush when you've got serious issues in other places downtown. I don't think any of you guys have attended that meeting that they have for Measure C. I attended the first. I don't believe anyone, I apologize. I don't know that anyone else has attended any others. But I urge you to, to actually attend them. And I would really recommend that you tell the people that are dealing with Measure C that you want to see your district, you want to see the amount that is listed for every single item that is spent money on. It is the right thing to do for the residents? They need accountability and they're not getting it. Not with a report that lists a whole bunch of different streets. And in some cases, if you look at District 3, it's like a block or two. And that's it. Where anything was even done? And then the rest of the money is spent in downtown in 1 and 6. Do the right thing and ask that these actually be itemized for the residents. Thank you.
That closes public comment on that item. And this is, well, Mr. Hart, you can start, but this is for us to receive your presentation, right? Okay, Mr. Hart, go ahead.
Well, this meeting and the public comment that we're receiving today points out that there's a big disconnect in the public's knowledge about this program. And the information is there. It is transparent. It is not the council's job to attend the Measure C Oversight Committee because the council is the place where the decisions about how the funding is spent in the first place. The Oversight Committee is there to assure the public that the money is being appropriately spent. And that's the purpose of the committee. That's why it's meeting. That's the purpose of this accountability report, is to make this information available. It is there in great detail on the website. It is a beautifully drafted document that has all of the information that apparently the folks who commented haven't seen yet. And I would urge them to go onto the website and look at that. The city will attempt increasingly, I think, to try and get this information out. Perhaps it's important to open up the report at the next council meeting and show it in its, you know, full color version in the council meeting. That's another way we can get the work out. It'll take a little more time in the council meeting, but apparently that might be necessary. As for the point that at any moment in time, we are going to equally divide the streets' road budget by council district, I think that is a terrible idea. Because the point is to allocate these funds efficiently based on the need where the streets need to be improved first, not by an arbitrary division of money according to council districts, which is the way the city has always approached its capital infrastructure investment, is on a need basis. So I would hope staff would continue to do that and allocate these funds where they ought to be spent rather than some arbitrary division, artificial arbitrary division. And the reason why the funds are being spent in these two districts in this particular fiscal year is that because the other districts had received investments in previous fiscal years. And if you take a snapshot in time at any one given moment, it may not look equitable, but in the picture of 10 years or 15 years, you'll see that those funds were spent where they're supposed to be spent. So unfortunately, you know, some of the public comment today couldn't be more wildly off-mark, but I appreciate that you are trying to get the appropriate information out in a very clear way that is transparent and available. And the committee obviously thinks that this is appropriate too, and, and they are content with it. So that's really all I have to say about this.
Thank you so much. And I don't see any other lights. But Mr. Samario, if you did want to talk about how priorities are set, I'm remembering that the West Side District streets were paved kind of recently. Mr., Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I think Mr. Hart said it well, Councilmember Hart said it well. We've talked to city council when you're setting our priorities, that we will address the needs in the city and the greatest needs first. Before Measure C, when we had limited resources, we were going by zone. We had like a six zones in the city that each year we would kind of cycle through. With Measure C, we now have more robust funding. So we're able to get at more of the greater needs citywide and we do so. I, I also just want to caution us getting into the by-district trap because the counter to that would be is where's the money raised with the one cent sales tax? And should we be looking at where the money, revenue is coming from by district and then only spend that revenue within that district? I think it's really important when you're talking street paving, in which residents drive on roads throughout all different districts, that we continue to take a citywide focus on this. And I just continue to think that's professionally the right thing to do.
Very good. So we thank you for the report and the information. We thank our Measure C committee. I see at least one person out there, Mr. Peters. And we'll move on to our next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, subject Stage 3 drought update.
Okay. Take a moment for our staff to settle in. Ms. Dyer, whenever you're ready.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager and I'll be giving the drought update for today. So first, I'll talk about our drought status, the demand status, the water supply status of each of our sources, and our water supply strategy. And at the end, we have Jill Zachary, the Parks and Rec Director here to give an update on De La Guerra Plaza as well. So drought status, it's no secret that we're still in a drought. So in our area, we're in a severe drought condition. What has changed on this is the rest of the state is starting to look a little dry as well. In our region, Santa Barbara, we have already experienced the seven driest consecutive years in recorded history, which is over 100 years of records. And we're currently in the eighth year of drought. So we have maintained our drought emergency declaration. Demand status, this is our tracking of monthly conservation. So we had a 31% reduction for the month of October and our 12-month running average is 29%, very close to the 30% target. At this point, we're not concerned about the conservation. We would like to see that target continue to be met at 30%, but we'll continue to monitor it closely. This is our water sales by revenue. The reason we show this chart is because the majority of our water fund revenues come from volumetric charges. So it's very dependent on the amount of water that's actually used. And for right now, our FY19 revenues are projecting, the actual revenues are very close to the projections. There was a dip here in October. The reason for that is because of the timing and delay of when payments and invoices are sent out. So for our water supply status, Gibraltar Reservoir is currently at about 2,700 acre feet. The water quality does still remain poor with turbidity and TOC levels. However, we're able to treat some of that water and are diverting enough to keep the hydroelectric plant running. And then we're blending that water with our other sources to meet our water quality requirements. The diversions began back in May and have been consistent. And there is a project going on this fiscal year up at Gibraltar where we're going to be replacing the diversion meter. Our current meter does meet state requirements for accuracy. However, we are going to be upgrading. It's a very old meter that's been up there for a long time. So we're gonna be replacing it. That will probably be a couple of weeks of downtime where we'll have to shut down diversions for that project. Kachuma Storage is currently at 59,000 acre feet. That's 31% of capacity. The city's portion of that storage is 7,100 acre feet. We currently have the most Kachuma allocation or Kachuma storage of all the member units And if conditions remain dry through this winter, the Combe Emergency Pumping Facility will be needed. That is when the lake levels would drop below the intake tower. And so we'd have to pump the water up to the intake in order to, to get it to the South Coast. So Combe will be deciding on that this spring if we don't get any sufficient rainfall. I wanted to just point out some difference. This is a chart showing the Kachuma Storage from the last drought, which is the black line, versus Kachuma Storage in the current drought, the green line. And there's a lot of things that have changed since the last drought. One being that we now have state water, which is conveyed through Kachuma. We've had about 60,000 acre feet of imported water that's been conveyed through there. It's not necessarily really stored in the lake all that much. We had a couple of years when we got up to about 3,000 acre feet of imported water in storage. It's usually just passed through. But what it does, just like desalin, recycled water, or other supplies, is it helps us to offset our use of Kachuma and preserve our carryover. Other changes have been that we now have more environmental requirements. We've released about 25,000 acre feet of water for the steelhead habitat downstream. We, and then the, the biggest difference, I believe, is that we've had just no inflows. It's been such a dry and very long drought period that we've, haven't had the natural inflows. And just to point that out, here we are. And for five years in a row, our inflows were less than 5,000 acre feet. And whether that low, none of that is really going to the Kachuma member units. Kachuma Project was, the intent of it was that we would only receive water that would have otherwise gone to the ocean. So it has to be large storm flows and a very watershed before it would be counted as project water. When it's this dry, it belongs to downstream water rights. And this shows our Kachuma storage and allocations in the current drought. I wanted to just talk about what was contemplated in our master contract environmental documents. There was modeling that was done that supported an operational yield of 25,700 roughly acre feet per year for all the Kachuma member units. And in that modeling, it was assumed that the member units would take 20% shortages once the storage level reached 100,000 acre feet. It also assumed a minimum pool of 12,000 acre feet. And there isn't a real clear definition of what the minimum pool is for, but there's various things like anticipated future sedimentation, water quality, recreation. water quality, recreation, fish, you know, potential fish needs. So there's various things it could be used for. In our current drought, you can see, once the reservoir dropped below 100,000, there was a 100% allocation that was given by the Bureau of Reclamation. In that year, the Kachuma member units all do supply planning. As you are well aware, we do our projections out for several years in advance. And so, once the water is allocated, we're then able to figure out how we use it in conjunction with our other supplies. And most, if not all, of the member units ended up carrying their water over and trying to stretch it out. So even though 100% was allocated, we all, in practice, had taken the 20% reduction because we didn't use it, we carried it over. The following year, we had a 45% allocation, and then that was followed by two years of zero allocations. So this was much greater shortages than the member units had ever been contemplated from supplies from the project. And I think it's pretty remarkable that we made it through this drought, and everyone was able to continue to supply water to their communities, given these cutbacks in water. And also, our minimum pool was maintained, so the total storage of the lake never dropped below 12,000. The lowest storage was about 14,000. So unless there's any questions on that, I was going to move on to imported water.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so we're continuing to maximize delivery to Kachuma. It's about 280 acre feet per month of deliveries for the city.
Ms. Dyer, Councilmember Sneddon does have a question.
Okay.
You go back to this slide. So just this slide and then the one on Slide 12, but this one first. So the bump up from the 0% allocation to the 40% allocation, what, did it rain at that time, or is that state water or combination?
That was a significant rain event in 2016.
And then the allocation went up to 40%?
Forty. Right. Reclamation had wanted to give a mid-year allocation, so they gave us 40%, followed by another 40% at the beginning of the next water year. They didn't want to allocate 80% all at once, so they spread it out.
And on each of these that are shown, do those allocations match what our requested allocation was?
They do, except for this year. We currently received a 20% initial allocation, although all the Kachuma member units jointly had requested 40% based on our modeling. And as you can see, several years ago, when the storage level was at similar levels, we received a 45% allocation. What happened was, Kachuma member units jointly requested 40%, and then the county, and passed it on to the county, who then provided their own cover letter with a separate request for a zero allocation, and then a compromise of giving us 20 now and then seeing what happens later. There's really no basis for, there was no data provided that's supporting the county's request.
I agree. And I just want to, I'm back on this one too, just to be sure that it's clear. So at a 40% allocation, that was at 100,000 acre feet of storage, and we had been given 100% allocation when we were at 75,000 acre feet? So the asking for the 40% allocation isn't out of the norm or out of line with the trend that we're seeing on this?
At that point, we requested 80%, but they split it up into 40 and 40, so effectively it was an 80% allocation.
Okay. And still not out of line with the trend that we're seeing?
Correct. That one, it was, you know, we all agreed upon the allocation at that point, that 80% was appropriate.
And you all meet together and jointly discuss modeling results and?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead, please.
Imported water, so we've continued to maximize delivery to Kachuma at 280 acre feet per month. The city's imported water available, we have zero in Kachuma. That's because we've been passing it through, and we have about 800 acre feet in San Luis Reservoir. The final allocation for 2018 was 35% from the state water project, Table A. They should be coming out with an initial allocation for 2019, and it usually comes out at the end of November. Haven't received it yet, so we'll be watching for that. And supplemental water purchases, we did purchase 1,500 acre feet from Mojave Water Agency this year. And if conditions continue to be dry, we anticipate we'll have to purchase an additional 2,000 acre feet next spring. That also assumes a 35% allocation from the state water project. So it's really to fill the gap in order to keep the pipe flowing full. Our current water debt is about 3,700 acre feet. That's a pretty manageable level. We're not too concerned. It has been higher in the past. We were able to pay off some of our debt with a purchase from the City of Santa Maria that we used to pay down our debt. So our groundwater, we are continuing to monitor seawater intrusion and our water levels. We have about 60 monitoring wells, and we have also updated our supply projections based on a 2018 USGS Sustainability Report, where they updated modeling of the sustainable yield of the groundwater basin and looking at seawater intrusion and water levels over a 10-year drought period. And so, at this point, we have our wells shut down, but we are planning on turning four out of nine of them online this spring if it continues to be a dry winter. Desalination project, it's been, continues to operate in full production. It's been producing very well for us with very good water quality. And we are currently working on an update to council regarding the status of the Water Sales Agreement draft terms. This is the agreement with Montecito Water District. It's taking a little bit longer because it's a little challenging with a 50-year agreement. Trying to anticipate everything that might happen in the next 50 years has been difficult in trying to protect ourselves for some of the unknowns that could come out. So regarding recycled water, we have current plant production as at 1.7 MGD, although the design capacity was supposed to be at 3 MGD. We are currently working through legal remedies to address the capacity issues and get it back up to operating at 3 MGD. However, the plant is online and is currently meeting all the demands on the recycled water So for our supply strategy, this is based on our adopted Long-Term Water Supply Plan, which had a strategy to keep our demands down. It actually projected our demands would go down over time despite increases in population. And it was also based on the worst drought of record, 1947 to 52, which is now the second worst drought. We also have a water shortage contingency plan, which provides guidance on how we would achieve demand reductions during shortages. So it outlines three drought stages, and it also includes desalination reactivation. That's really has been our insurance policy during droughts to make sure that we have And so during droughts, our drought supplies include increased groundwater pumping. We normally rest our basins during normal and wet years. And we also import state water, that's banked water and purchased water through the state water project. That supply also is not normally used in normal to wet years. We also have planned demand reductions, which are done through adjustments to water rates, regulations as needed, and increased outreach. And then finally, desalination as well. So this was on the left-hand side, this was our planned water supplies according to our Long-Term Water Supply Plan, and it shows the 20% reductions from the Kachuma Project. And then this on the right is what has actually happened, and it's a pretty drastic difference between our surface water. This line here is our Kachuma and Gibraltar surface water supplies. This was planned, and this is what we actually received. So significant cutbacks in our surface water supplies because of how dry, the drought conditions that we've had. So this is our current water supply strategy. We're currently in year eight, and we look out a few years. So for this year, we're planning on using, the purple is recycled water, the medium blue is Kachuma water, so most of that is carryover from previous years. We have Gibraltar and Mission Tunnel. We have, yellow is groundwater. Green is our state water project. We're assuming a 35% allocation. Orange would be supplemental purchases to make up the difference, to keep the pipe flowing full. And then green is, the lighter green is desalin. So looking out ahead, we have sufficient supplies to meet our demands until 2021. We do have a gap here, but we feel that's manageable and we have options to address that. So we'll be reassessing this again in the spring, once we know what our rainfall has been. As I understand, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, so Wednesday afternoon, from what I hear, it's going to be probably less than an inch, so probably want to stay off the roads. What, sorry, what did you say?
Knock the dust down.
Yeah, it'll knock the dust down. And here I have Jill Zachary to discuss an update on De La Guerra Plaza. This is something that came up in a previous drought update.
Very good. Ms. Zachary?
Madam Mayor, council members, based on the discussion by council at the last drought update, we spent some time sort of looking at the, what had been going on in De La Guerra Plaza essentially since 2014, which is when the department, as part of its city effort to respond to the drought, put together its drought response plan. De La Guerra Plaza was one of those locations in our inventory where we actively looked to reduce our water use for a number of reasons. One, it's not an active play. Our focus in our drought plan is to make sure that our playing fields continue to be irrigated because children and adults are playing on them in order to maintain the turf. So in 2014, we actually reduced our water use by 38%, looking over our numbers. And then we further continued to reduce it over subsequent years, in part as the city's demonstration in its response to the drought, in part because we found the water that we were using was really needed in other locations, particularly to support active use. And then there's always the cost of water, which has increased over those years as well, so trying to balance all of those issues. If council would like us to go back to irrigating and taking care of the plaza in a way that we did right around when the drought was declared, we believe it would cost us about $9,000 to get to sort of the status quo of what we had, and that's labor to renew the soil. We'd have to go seek out stolons to replant grass areas. We'd have to test and repair the irrigation, to fertilize, all the things you can imagine you'd have to do to revitalize a section of turf. And then to maintain it, the annual maintenance, our estimates would be about $21,000 a year. So you imagine, between now and the end of the fiscal year, if we were to take on turf renewal, that would be the cost, and then following on, on an annual basis. And again, it includes all of those considerations, as well as the turf renewal that we do after Fiesta. I recall the years when we fenced it off and had to renew the turf. To do the turf renewal just now, we would do something similar. We would fence it off, and it would be fenced off for two or three months in order to achieve those improvements. Did also include a point on the slide, which talks about if we really wanted to go back and really look at installing a more efficient irrigation system, again, in consideration of the fact that we're trying to reduce our water use for the long term, not just as part of the drought. We could do that and probably spend some time really upgrading the soil profile. That's a much larger project, probably on the order of a six-figure project. The irrigation system that's in there right now is almost 30 years old, similar to a lot of the irrigation that you find throughout our city park system, and we're slowly finding ways to upgrade it as we go. So hopefully that answers some of the questions. If you have any other considerations, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'll jump in. I don't see any lights, so I know that in possibly displacing the farmer's market with the police headquarters, the farmer's market new location might be De La Guerra Plaza. Mr. Casey, we would be premature then to take action on restoring the turf if there's some discussion about what to do with De La Guerra Plaza in the future?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, council members, I think that might be prudent just to kind of hold off a couple of months and let the police station location play itself out and let the conversation occur a little bit more about if the Cota Street site is looking more viable, where we find a viable alternative for the farmer's market, because it does sound like there's some initial thoughts that maybe with a revisioning of De La Guerra Plaza, like we've talked about years before, it might be a really favorable place for the farmer's market to land. And so I think we wouldn't mind a little time to kind of work with them on that and have that preliminary conversation, and then we bring that back to the full council after the start of the new year as part of the police location option. That might be a good approach.
Very good. We do have a couple of public comments speakers, but when we come back, we could talk about if there is support for this, if De La Guerra Plaza is not used for something else, and so, okay. Phil Walker, you're going to be first, and then Robert Burke following. Welcome, Mr. Walker.
Good afternoon. Again, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, it's really hard to believe that seven and a half years ago, I got drenched working at El Estero. The coworker didn't feel up to working that evening, and I got 1.25 inches in 35 minutes and 42 degrees. It was a miserable night, but we got through it. And that's the last time that Kachuma actually filled and went down the spillway, seven and a half years ago. So all in all, the staff, Department of Water Resources is doing an excellent job considering the hand they've been dealt. One thing, it'd be great to see Montecito get on board. I voted for the desalin plan back in 1991 or '90. Get on board with it, and who knows? Like I say, Guleta is in the drought too, and they might be knocking on the door one of these days and go back to the original 10,000 acre feet output. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Madam Mayor, members. A week ago Sunday night, I live up in Santa Fe Springs, also known as Shifco, and Sunday, and these are fourplexes that are dotted around, there's about 100 units or so. A week ago Sunday night, a tree that's on a 10-foot embankment higher than my unit, a large embankment, fell, and it crashed through, the whole tree fell. It crashed through the fence up there, and it crashed through my fence and landed, the crown landed on my patio. I did not know anything happened until the maintenance man knocked on my door and said, "Hmm." And so, but my, since we have so many of the bright minds here today, I'm curious about whether it was the drought that may have been responsible for that, what the condition of the trees are in the city, and maybe just get some words of wisdom as far as how to maintain the health of the trees and prevent any accidents. Had that tree fallen three inches to the left, it would have crashed right into the roof. So talking about prime planting for a tree falling with a disaster, you know, it was, it avoided major damage. So I leave that to the council, whether we could have some kind of words of wisdom on that. Thanks. I mean, I'm thinking specifically of the parks, as well as how individual owners can take a look at tree maintenance, because I know it's, you know, trees are sanctified beings in Santa Barbara, so I would appreciate some kind of comments. Thanks.
Oh, wow. We'll close our public comment. And Ms. Zachary, you are familiar with the trees and the parks and our, our street trees. A quick comment from you on that question? Are they suffering from the drought, I think?
Mayor Mario and council members, yes. We've had an increased loss of trees as a result of the drought, and, and also trees that don't get adequate water are more susceptible to disease, and disease can affect their lifespan as well. As part of our efforts during the drought response, we really initially focused and continue to focus on young trees. So you'll see the gator bags, the green bags around the tree trunks of the younger trees, because those are the ones that actively get water for the first three to five years. And then also our historic trees, where we've been able to install watering devices. There are tens of thousands of trees throughout the city, and so sometimes we could lose a tree as a result of the drought, or there could have been something else that was going on.
Thank you. Thank you for that question, Mr. Burke.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could, we also, you know, the Water Conservation Department group has been, you know, encouraging conservation, wanting people to let their lawns go. We don't want people to stop watering their trees and have, they've developed some videos and materials that are available on our website, which, here's the phone number and the website to go, where you can see advice on how to properly water your trees, you know, if it's around the drip line, and then there's probes that can be used. So there's, there are some materials available through our Water Conservation Group on how to, how to water trees.
Very good. So back to the council, Mr. Dominguez, questions or closing comments since we're...
I just want to thank staff for the great efforts and for the report today, and move to accept the report if you want a motion, otherwise.
Very good. Ms. Sneddon.
I second that motion if that's necessary to accept the report. Back to Slide 23. I just want to use that for two things. One, to really highlight what a remarkable job you do with balancing all these different parts of our water portfolio. It's, it's really, it's really remarkable how you're able to do that, and especially when conditions change each year. I mean, from year to year, what you're using to balance really changes. I also want to use this to emphasize that we're at 30% extraordinary conservation, and that even if other water availability came up, that we still would need to rely on that conservation. And so we're not to a place yet of rebound, or being back out of the drought, or, or anything even close to that. And I appreciate that, and we've talked about this at Water Commission, I appreciate that you continue to put that 30% on there to show what it is that the public is doing in, in their part for that extraordinary conservation, and that we still, still need to keep that up. And then just planning ahead, I'm noticing also that we'll have more water purchases planned, and is that just in case, or is that we're, that's in the plan that will need to be increasing purchases to make up for?
Madam Mayor, council member Sneddon, we are planning to keep the pipe flowing full. So in the next, if we don't get some reprieve this winter, we're looking at additional 2,000 acre feet purchased this fiscal year, which we did budget for, and then we'll have to just continue planning going forward, because the state water really is a critical part of our water supply going forward in a drought. If, if we start extending this chart out farther, what will happen is our groundwater basins will eventually be depleted, and then really we'll be relying on D cell and state water, and then, you know, some, something to fill the gap, whether it's additional conservation, or expanding D cell, or a combination of both.
So I think, thank you. I think it's really important to emphasize here that we're, it's, it's not just an extended status quo drought, it's continued pressure in all of these different areas, including added purchases, more conservation, and still having a gap in the future. So I just thank you for managing it for us.
Well, so when we say we have water through 2020, you mean October of 2020, or...
This would go through October of 2021.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the takeaway for folks today is we have adequate water supply for now, but keep conserving?
Correct. It's, it's really important that people continue to conserve, you know, even with, I think there's been, you know, when we reactivated D cell nation, I think some people thought, oh, the problem is solved. It really isn't. We really, it was appropriately sized. It's really expensive to expand it, and part of our strategy in our supply mix is the 30% conservation, which we need to emphasize.
And then I see in the report that the NOAA forecasters are saying there's an equal chance we'll be above normal rain going forward, and there's an equal chance of below normal, above and below. So sometime, they can tell us it's raining next week, but not four months from now, right? So anyway, keep conserving. All in favor of receiving this report? Aye. Any against? Okay, good. Thank you. And our next item is council member assignment reports, which usually signals the end of our meeting, but we'll have a closed session after that, and then we have an evening session at 6:00. And Mr. Casey, this is the last opportunity for people who've applied for our boards and commissions, so if you're watching in TV land, be sure and get down here at 6:00 to give your interview, or you won't be able, we won't be able to appoint you without you appearing here in chambers. So Greg Hart, you go ahead and start on your assignment reports.
Last week with Mayor Mario and Councilmember Gutierrez, I attended the Westside Boys and Girls Club's Thanksgiving event, which was really well-attended, huge crowd of people.
Delicious food.
Delicious food, prepared by the Kiwanis Club, I think, and great event. Also attended, as the council's representative, the Beacon Board meeting, and Beacon is working diligently to try and figure out a pathway to proactively plan to have beach nourishment strategies going forward, trying to do the work with all the resource agencies in advance of, an opportunity to have material to put on the beaches, to, you know, try and nourish the dwindling state of beaches. It's an ongoing problem, because, you know, human intervention in the cycles of creek restoration and, or creek flows have limited the flow of sand to the beaches, and we're slowly, but over time, starving the beaches at the same time that climate change is causing sea level rise. So we are on a crash course, a collision course, where, you know, beaches will be lost, and at this point in time, the regulatory agencies are not very receptive to planning ahead to have beach nourishment strategies. So it's going to require a lot more creative thinking and more flexibility going forward if we're going to have beaches at all.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Thank you. I attended a COME operations meeting where we discussed approving a secured pipeline feasibility study, and this is so that we could move away from our dependence on the emergency barge when the water, lake levels get low. Also a COME special meeting on fish crossing projects. Water Commission, we heard updates on all the capital improvement projects that are going well. Attended Women's Summit with Mayor Mario, that was excellent. And CCRB discussed legal issues related to the biological opinion that we're still working on.
Councilmember Dominguez.
I attended a Visit Santa Barbara Board meeting, and they discussed the hospitality industry, and the hotels have mostly recovered from, from last year, and they're optimistic.
Sounds good. And then Councilmember Dominguez and Councilmember Gutierrez and I did a couple of downtown events. PRIM is a new pop-up on State Street, 714 State, and that was part of the city's pop-up incentive program. They'll be getting a sign through our expedited sign program. We give Nina Johnson, our Assistant City Administrator, a lot of credit for her work there. We went to Persona Pizza, which is giving in pizza, giving away free pizza if you buy $10 at their store, and they want people to shop downtown. I attended the last Police Department site meeting at La Cumbre Junior High. I think Councilmember Gutierrez, you were there, some other people were there. So we're all taking that very seriously, where we cite the new police department and how to replace the things that might be displaced because of that. The SB CAG meeting, we talked about widening Highway 101. The funding has been secured after the election, because no change in the tax revenue that supports roads and highways. And then just real quick, there's a couple of projects related to widening of interest to the city. The Cabrillo Underpass Project, the design is 65% complete. The construction's a ways out, though. The Olive Mill intersection, preliminary design and environmental studies underway, and the environmental approval is anticipated in summer 2019. Also, construction a long ways away. Also from SB CAG, our, there's a subcommittee of staff members called T-TAC, and they will be looking at the scooter share issue on a regional, with a regional focus, because there's scooters all along the South Coast, and so they're going to take, going to take that up. And then looking forward, as I said in public comment, Wednesday, November 28, 5:30 PM at the Louise Lowry Davis Center, we'll be talking about the Connect Home Program, which is the tiny houses project, too. We need more community input, and so we've scheduled a meeting for that. So that's all I have, and Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I attended the Neighborhood Advisory Council Year-in-Review, where they went over their goals from, that they achieved from last, or this year, and the goals they hope to achieve next year. I also attended the Boys and Girls Club Thanksgiving Dinner, which was great. The Steering Committee for the Westside Health, which is really exciting, something that's going to be coming up in the future on how to improve the health of the Westside community. I also attended the Father Virgil Cordero's Center opening, and that was really cool to see that, you know, Father Virgil's memory is being lived on in our community, and the center's a cool place where you can go to do your laundry for free, and they even do feet washing and massages there. The monks are running it, so it's a very cool facility. And yes, I also attended the ribbon cutting. Actually, I attended a couple ribbon cuttings at Paseo Nuevo, so that's exciting to see businesses opening up downtown. And yeah, thank you.
Thanks, and I'll just add that it's the Sisters of Charity from St. Vincent's, working with the brothers or fathers from the old mission to do that Cordonno Center. Thanks. Just want to give the sisters a little love. Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I wanted to bring up one of our real pillars of the community who passed away, was Ozzy De Ross, who was the second owner of Santa Barbara Stone after his father. His son, Peter Dow, owns it today. You know, created a lot of great public works, a lot of this in the tradition of amazing Italian stone mason of this town. So Ozzy was a frequent council watcher and critic, and a lot of fun to talk to, real character, and the Santa Barbara is, is going to miss him.
Okay, we can adjourn in his honor later on tonight. We have a closed session right now.
Item number 11, subject conference with labor negotiator, as described in Agenda Item Number 11.
Okay. So we'll be back here at 6:00. Everybody, come back, and we'll adjourn for now to closed session. We're reconvening the meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council for November 20th. Will you take a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Friedman's absent. Councilmember Dominguez?
Here.
Mayor Pretem Rouse? Councilmember Hart?
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Mario?
Here. We have a ceremonial item. Will you read that, please?
Item number 12, subject United Boys and Girls Club Gold Card Status Student Recognition.
Mr. Baker, why don't you come up and describe what the gold card means for our audience?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs. Thank you again for recognizing our kids. This is a very special ceremony. It's a gold card ceremony, and the way this works is these children that are here tonight, along with many that weren't able to make it this evening, have, have attended the Boys and Girls Club 105 days already this calendar year. What we know, the significance of that is, is as, as Councilmember Hart knows all too well, because he's heard me make this pitch many, many times, that they are, the children that attend the Boys and Girls Club 105 days in the same calendar year are twice as likely to graduate high school in time, and twice as likely to lead a healthy lifestyle. Many of these children are well on their way to achieving 200 days in the Boys and Girls Club. So this is our opportunity, the mayor and council, we do this in every city that we operate a Boys and Girls Club in, whether it's Buellton, Lompoc, Carpinteria, Galita, and Westside Santa Barbara. We, we actually have the kids here tonight, and we're really excited to recognize them. Thank you for doing this. This is a big deal for these kids. They're really, really excited. And as I, as I told Paul Casey, I explained to them that his job is like the principal of the city, so he's, they understood that. That worked really well. They made that analogy, so.
So here's our proclamation and the cards for the students who couldn't make it.
Okay, we got that.
Let's see our beautiful, our beautiful cards for the students. So I'll call them up one at a time, and we can take a photo, too.
Awesome.
Carlos Bueno, are you here? Oh, wait. That's your card. Thank you. David Chavez? How do you say it? Ivan?
Omar Chavez.
Ruby Chavez? Are you all brother and sister? Alex Cruz?
That's you.
Oh, wait. Nina Cruz? Angel Diaz? Giovanni Diaz? And this must be Evan Uriarte?
Is that the council, everybody behind it?
Yeah, sure.
Can we do that?
Do you want to come down? Thanks to those in the audience who let us do our ceremonial item. Yeah, come on down. Sergeant Ella? Do you want to come? We'll open public comment for items not on the agenda. If anyone's here to talk about something that's not our city advisory group interviews, no. So we'll close that public comment, and we'll go to our, our interviews. Thank you. Generally, we're asking you to stay within three minutes, is, and come up and tell us why you're applying for the, the position, a little bit about your experience, and if you're incumbent, why you're coming back a second time. Is anyone here for the Access Advisory Committee? Come on up, please, and say your name, and we'll find your name, and it'll help, just to pause after you say your name. Mr. Rouse? Is anyone here for the Access Advisory Committee? Come on up, please, and say your name, and we'll find your name, and it'll help just to pause after you say your name. Mr. Rouse? We have a microphone a little closer to, oh, very good.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Dominguez?
I know you said three minutes, but if people can do it in two minutes, given the volume, that would be appreciated by everyone.
Sure. Thank you.
Is this working?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Suzanne Courts Tejada, and I'm applying for the opportunity to serve on the Advisory Access Committee. I'm an architect by training and practice. I grew up here in Galita, and I got my Bachelor's in Architecture from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I got my Master's in Architecture from the University of Pennsylvania, and I have been practicing architecture in Santa Barbara since I moved back here in 2002. I had the opportunity to be the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, Santa Barbara Chapter President in 2012, and I've had the opportunity to do lots of different type of work, ranging from residential, commercial, and institutional. When I was working in institutional, I had a lot of experience with ADA, with updating the current schools, K through 12, with ADA amenities. And my personal background is about, back in 1989, I was diagnosed with MS, and it's become a lot more of an issue in my life in the last couple of years. So it's something that I experience every day, and I live it, and I experience it, and I see the benefits of the ADA laws. And I think with my experience as an architect and in the design industry, and I have to stay up on the current codes as a licensed architect, I became licensed in 2007, we have to do continual education, especially in accessibility. So I believe that my experience professionally and my personal experience with my limitations in terms of my accessibility limitations, I think, make me an ideal candidate for this committee, and I would love to have an opportunity to bring my experience from both sides. So thank you very much.
Are there questions for Ms. Tejada? I don't see any, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else for Access Advisory? Moving on to the Airport Commission. Applicant, come on up.
Hello, Mayor? City Councilmembers, I hope you don't mind if I read this?
That's fine.
Okay, good, and then I can even do it in one minute.
Are you Carol Goodman by any chance?
Yes, Carol Goodman.
Okay, thank you.
And I am applying for the Airport Commission. After several years of dreaming and planning, my husband and I were lucky enough to relocate from the east coast, which you might even be able to hear still a little bit of, to make Santa Barbara our home nearly a decade ago. Over this past summer, I made a decision to get more involved with my adopted home, and after reviewing the various advisory groups listed on the city's website, I decided to apply for the Airport Commission, as it seems like a working condition with lots of exciting potential on the horizon. I'm not an aviation expert of any kind, nonetheless, I am very willing to devote the time and energy to do the necessary homework, to get fully up to speed on all the pertinent airport-related issues should you choose to appoint me. It seems to me that this is a very important and crucial time to have some highly motivated fresh blood on the Airport Commission, given that they will be hiring a new Airport Director and assisting in implementing the city's 20-year Airport Master Plan, budgeted at $85 million, and very impressive. I won't claim to have read it all yet. Selfishly, as a Santa Barbara resident, I also hope the staff and commission can implement the needed changes that allow existing and/or additional airlines the ability to offer Santa Barbaraans more affordable flights and more destinations near and far. I think that's all. In closing, I thank you in advance for your consideration of my application, and I wish you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks. Any questions for this applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Airport? Oh, very good. Oh, and a couple. Good.
Good evening, Mayor Mario, and members of the City Council. My name is Dennis Houghton. I reside in Randy Rouse's district, the Mesa, and I'm applying for the Airport Commissioner position. I actually came here twice. I appeared in front of the City Council on October 25, 2016, and June 12 of this year, and to date, I've attended 16 Airport Commission meetings, and even met with Kevin Shore, our Airport Consultant with Campbell Hill Aviation, to discuss improving airline service to our airport. Reluctantly, I missed the last two meetings. I was in airports. I was in Washington DC and Virginia and North Carolina, then an extended European trip. So I missed those last two, and I regret that. It won't happen in the future. I hesitated to actually apply to the Airport Commission this time around, because, I'll be honest with you, I've been so impressed with the meetings I've gone to that we have an outstanding Airport Commission, and we have a great staff with our airport. And I thought we were in good shape, and I was going to pass until Mrs. Estrada emailed me about the openings, and I queried back and said, "Well, how many openings are there?" And "Three, and two are termed out." So I thought, "I'd better throw my hat in." So I am. A little history, you may recall from my last two presentations, that first came to Santa Barbara, I'd never flown commercially. I joined a pharmaceutical company, and I had to go to training, and I'd never flown commercial. I asked my manager, "What airline should I fly?" And he said, "United." My son-in-law is a United pilot, and my daughter's a flight attendant. I now have flown 2.7 million miles on United Airlines, and if you add it up, over 3.2 million miles in total, hitting every continent, nearly every major city in the United States, and many, many of the smaller ones. So I know a little bit about airports. I know good when I see it, but I want our airport to be great. I believe that my perspective I've gained as a business traveler these past 40 years could be a valuable asset if I remember the Airport Commission. Like I said, I believe Hazel Johns has done an outstanding job as Airport Director, and I look very much forward to our new Airport Director coming onboard soon. I'd like to be involved in that process. Many of my wants have been addressed. When I first started going to meetings and before the City Council, I said I'd like to see airline service to the city of Oakland and the city of Las Vegas. Contour Airlines, even though it's just a 30-seat airline, has now begun service. Very important for us parents that have children in college. Our son was in the Bay Area at Berkeley, but I know many parents with children in UCSB that they end up being part of the leakage, finding other ways than the airlines that get to and from Santa Barbara. And that's what I really want to address as an Airport Commissioner, is leakage. I'm working with a company over here called Evadation Health, and I'm amazed that they've recruited their top data scientists at Santa Barbara, but they keep their administration and finance and HR people up in Menlo Park. They use Surfair. Well, that's a distraction from Southwest Airlines coming here. I went to a tech meeting just last week, and a promising company that started out at UCSB moved to Phoenix, and I asked, "Why are you in Phoenix?" He says, "You know, it's hard to get in and out of this town." Yet he's installing the new sound system in the Santa Barbara Bowl. I want to make our airport more accessible to small companies like my own. I'm an executive with a company called GI Logic, and we're in the process of looking for commercial real estate. Where can we go? The Evadation people are moving to Sonos Building, and they said, "Hey, you can have my second floor." But I still have the issues with my two co-founders saying, "Well, it's hard to get in and out of Santa Barbara, Dennis." That's what I want to address. As an Airport Commissioner, I want to be the Access Commissioner, and really helping our airport bring more flights that can be competitive, so we can compete for these bright young people coming out of UCSB. And I appreciate your consideration for this.
Thanks. Any questions? No, good presentation.
Thank you very much.
One more, I saw?
One other thing, I almost forgot. I'm sitting next to Paul Bowen, and Paul is an Airport Commissioner, and I hardly endorse him. He's done an outstanding job of being on the Commission of the last six or seven months.
In competition with him, okay.
No, we're colleagues. We appreciate it.
Mr. Bowman?
Just two more for Airport.
Oh, two more, okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Bowen, and I'm currently an Airport Commissioner. I serve as a county resident. I have attended all the Airport Commission meetings and subcommittee meetings. Before I became an Airport Commissioner, I attended all the meetings for six years, although I did miss two, illness. I have been for 35 years using the Santa Barbara Airport as a traveler and as a pilot. I've always been interested in airport operations. To be honest with you, I'm an airport junkie. This year, at the Galita Lemon Festival, I worked at the Santa Barbara Airport booth, and our staff has an amazing marketing program that they do. I'm very impressed with the marketing side of things. I'm volunteering to assist in the interview process for the next Airport Director. With my 22 years as a business owner, I have conducted quite a lot of interviews. I hope to be able to assist the city in finding the best possible Airport Director. This year, I attended the Galita's Finest Awards Banquet at, or as a guest of, the Santa Barbara Airport at their table. I attend this event every year, but it was quite a pleasure to represent the city of Santa Barbara Airport. During his interview a few weeks ago, Bruce Miller, who has been an Airport Commissioner for many, many years, recommended that you continue me as Airport Commissioner, and if you can get past the term-limited issues that he's facing. He brings a really good, positive attitude and a lot of knowledge. If you're looking for a new member, the gentleman that was just before me, Dennis, I highly recommend him. We've had multiple great discussions about airport operations after Airport Commission meetings. My advice to the many other candidates that we have, and I'm very pleased to see so much interest in being on the Airport Commission, is that they get involved and attend all the Airport Commission meetings they can. Ideally, come sit in on some of the subcommittee meetings where we get a lot of our work done, and learn as much as they can. I would love to see them all make their chance to be on the Airport Commission, but preferably after getting a little more up to speed on things. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to help serve the community as an Airport Commissioner. I see my involvement in the Airport Commission as a chance to give back to the community that has been so wonderful to me. If you have any questions for me, or any questions about how things are going at the airport?
We're good.
Thank you.
One more for Airport Commission.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm in Oscar's district, and I just wanted to say congratulations publicly. We spoke privately. You won with a lot of grace, and I hope I lost with just as much grace. All of us have had a unique opportunity with getting to know one another in the last several months. Seems like last year with the last November election cycle, but it wasn't too long ago. And I think I've been able to demonstrate how resourceful I've been, a lot of my leadership skills, my communication skills. A lot of you know about my background, so I don't want to, right now I've got Jason whispering in my ear as far as the two-minute competition. But what you may not know about me is what I know about the airport, and why specifically I would be a good addition to the next two roles that are open, or the next three roles, rather. I know that there's a master plan, and it's interesting, when you think about, you know, I've done a 30-day, 60-day, 90-day plan or a year plan. There's a 20-year plan, so it's very comprehensive. So I know implementing that master plan is a huge priority. As other folks have talked about, there's an Executive Director role that's open. It just closed, I believe, yesterday. So filling that Executive Director role, someone that can wrap their arms around that master plan and implement it accordingly is utmost priority as well. And I think I can draw from a lot of my personnel experience. Last, I'd say with RFPs, and there's a couple of RFPs here on the priority list, it's the Process for Fixed-Based Operations, FBOs. I've got a lot of experience with the RFP process, and also just due diligence, because that's what really the RFP process is about. I've been on the County Commission, as you guys know, for the pension for the county employees, and we do RFPs several times within a year because of investment consultants, legal counsel, and a lot of different portfolio managers, that we go through this very extensive, comprehensive process. If this was a contest on how many hours you've been in an airport, I'm sure I would lose that contest. But I don't think that's the only requirement that brings value to a board. I think visiting airports and having a good understanding is very good, but I also understand that you can dive into a lot of other resources, and any gaps that you may make up and you may miss in those areas, you can make up real quickly. So I'm hoping that all of you guys have been able to see what I bring to the table, and I can earn every single one of your votes.
Any questions for Mr. Vidal? Thank you for applying.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Architectural Board of Review, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Mario and Councilmembers. My name is Katie Klein, and I'm a licensed landscape architect currently working for a local firm, CJMLA. My previous work experience includes work in design-build, work with Orange County Parks, irrigation auditing, and two years working in water conservation for Galita Water District. I am aware of the goals and responsibilities that go along with serving on ABR. The majority of my work experience has been in commercial, mixed-use, multifamily projects that have gone before ABR and other city advisory groups. I have experience creating high-quality construction documents, details, and graphics, as well as navigating projects through both the Design Review Process and City Building Department. I would be successful in serving on ABR because I understand the applicant's challenge of balancing design aesthetic with building code and city agency regulation. It's the responsibility of ABR to ensure development is consistent with city guidelines and policies. It's the landscape architect's role to ensure planting and site work is environmentally responsible, aesthetically pleasing, compatible with the neighborhood, and promotes a high standard of safety. Regarding size, mass, bulk, and scale, it's important to look at the materials and features of a project, such as tree species and placement, walls, balconies, and paving, which all contribute to a positive pedestrian experience with a project. ABR should represent a diverse set of opinions to accurately reflect the Santa Barbara community. I would be able to bring a young professional perspective, which is increasingly important as Santa Barbara continues to evolve. Projects that go before ABR are important because they impact the community on a large scale, and often require mitigation measures that improve the existing environment. I have lived in Santa Barbara for 10 years and care deeply about the community, the environment, and protecting the architectural integrity that has made Santa Barbara such a beautiful city. Thank you.
And you're Katie Klein?
Yes.
Any questions for Ms. Klein? Ms. Sneddon?
Hi, I'm just wondering what do you see as the biggest challenges facing the Architectural Board of Review and how you might face those challenges?
Yes, I think housing is a hot-topic item right now, and I think just giving the pedestrian more of a pleasant experience, as we know State Street is struggling a bit, so just creating a positive experience for the pedestrian and what that means through design.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I saw someone else in the back. Ms. Salee, come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Pat Salee. I'm applying for the public or related field opening on ABR. I'm a long-term city of Santa Barbara resident. I'm one of those UCSB grads who managed to stay and have lived in various parts of the city, but I now live downtown. I'm also a professional planner, certified planner. I've been doing that for 30-plus years, and that includes nine years working for the city of Santa Barbara. And during those nine years, I staffed ABR at a time when they had nine members, and it really personified herding cats. It was quite an experience. I wrote the first ABR guidelines. I worked on the much-discussed lately Haley-Milpus Guidelines, and that was a long time ago. And my three years sitting there, it was every Monday in those days, really opened my eyes to the built environment and towns and cities and the fabric of those, and how great they can be, and what tends to work and what tends to not work. So there's really two reasons I'm applying. First, I feel I have a lot of experience, both working with ABR, working with guidelines, and interpreting those, interpreting laws, and I think that's a lot of what people are struggling with right now. What do these guidelines say? How do they all integrate? And how do they relate to this particular neighborhood, this applicant's goals, the concerns of neighbors? I recently was in the role of a neighbor of a project, and it's eye-opening, how important that is to you and your education about what are the rules, what's appropriate, what isn't. And I feel I could be very helpful in that regard. And the- I feel I could be very helpful in that regard. And the second reason, and probably the most important, is that professionally and personally, I'm a very collaborative person. I certainly understand the need for housing. As I said, I've been here a long time, managed to buy a house a long time ago, and it's made our lives much better. I have a 30-year-old daughter who has just moved back to town, and trying to find a decent studio, let alone a one-bedroom, that's less than $2,000, is not easy, and this is a real problem. I want my kids here. Maybe I'll get to be a grandma one of these days. But it's just really, really hard. But we also have laws that are coming down from the state. We have lots of design guidelines. We have some wonderful neighborhoods that really need to be respected. And I feel I can work with the ABR applicants, city staff, neighbors, to help come out with a win-win solution, highest common denominator, not lowest. So I would really appreciate your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Sneddon, your light's on.
I didn't mean to leave it on, but yes, I have the same question as what you see as the biggest challenges and how to meet them.
It's really housing, housing, housing. In the short term, as we work with the AUD and ADUs, and could you choose acronyms with different letters next time? Really takes a while to figure that out. But we we have to deal with this in a way that still respects the community, the historic resources. And this is an issue that has been with us for a long time. It's not going away. And everybody would like to live in coastal California, but we have to find a way to accommodate people reasonably within resources. And it's going to be a challenge. It's not easy, or it would have been solved a long time ago.
Thanks. Anyone else for Architectural Board of Review? No, no, they're leaving. Okay. Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals? Welcome.
I will keep this brief, I promise, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Jeff Hornbuckle. I'm applying for the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals. Since graduating from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in 2003, I've been practicing architecture here in Santa Barbara. I became a licensed architect in 2010 and am a partner with the Cornell Collective. I've been fortunate to work on a wide variety of project types and sizes, all of which have presented their own very different code challenges. Based on this experience, I believe I have a solid knowledge of the California Building Code, as well as the plan check process, and therefore would be an asset to the Board of Appeals. With that, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any lights on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hornbuckle, thank you. Anyone else? Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals? Community Development and Human Services Committee? Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Alejandra Gutierrez, and I'm interviewing to get re-elected. I was sitting in the committee for the last three years to represent the West Side, currently moved, and I want to reapply to represent the East Side. I've worked with nonprofits for the last 10 years at the job that I have with the school district, and I think my input in that committee is very valuable, being raised and born in Santa Barbara, being product of the school district, and also having to benefit from a lot of the nonprofits that receive the CDBG funding, who the committee is responsible to give suggestions to the city council. Any questions?
All right. Very good. Any questions from Ms. Gutierrez? No. Thank you for reapplying. Anyone else? Community, CDBG and Human Services? Community Events and Festivals Committee? Mr. Perry, come on up.
I should have put on a tie tonight. Roger Perry, I am here to apply for my fourth term as an Events and Festivals Committee member, commission member. I have a wide background of activities in Santa Barbara, going back to coaching, through Days with Fiesta, running mercados, volunteering with solstice, cosponsorship events with the city parks and rec, and putting on youth music events in the city, and have thoroughly enjoyed the 12 years that I've served on this commission. Our biggest challenge, Ms. Paul, we need more money, because the candidates that come through are so worthy, and we need those off-season activities more and more today than we have in the past. Open for questions.
Well, I'll start. So I'm just looking at your tenure, so altogether 12 years, but not consecutively?
Consecutive.
Oh, consecutive. All right. Well, thanks for your good service. Any any other questions for Mr. Perry? No. Good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Howe, come on up. I see your name here. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Mario and city council. My name is Ryan Howe. I've spent about 13 years working for Smokey Robinson and his concert promotion company in Los Angeles. One of the chief duties that I had while we were promoting and producing these events was to maintain the brand and integrity of Motown and the way that we promoted it. And that is really what I see. One of the major things here with this particular festival is while we're doing these events, selecting these events, looking through, proposing these events, is to maintaining the through our promotions, the integrity of the brand that Santa Barbara has built. So that's, I think, one of the most important things that I see doing it. The thing that most interests me about it, I think, is really the charitable event side, and actually learning more about how it's done here. I mean, I know how it's done other places. But but that's the thing that really intrigues me the most about joining the committee. And of course, this would be my first time, so.
Questions for Mr. Howe? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Community Events and Festivals? Creeks Advisory Committee? Oh, a couple people. Come on up. Ma'am, you first, yeah.
Mayor Mario and city council members, my name is Lori Gaskin, and it's nice to be in front of you in a different capacity. I am here as an applicant for the Creeks Advisory Committee. I recently retired as president of Santa Barbara City College, and I'm a resident of Santa Barbara. Why I wish to be appointed, and that is coupled with some of the experiences I think that I may be able to share with the committee, is threefold. One is my academic training and background. I am a fluvial geomorphologist by academic training, and that means that I have extensive experience and a passion for streams and stream systems, hydrology, and watershed. And in particular, I focused on erosion, accelerated erosion and sedimentation due to natural processes as well as human-induced changes to the watershed. That was way back then, and I taught extensively in that field, and then was fortunate enough to move into other service in higher education. So my academic training, secondly, is my passion for the environment. Right now, I serve as a board member on Santa Barbara Audubon Society. I am co-chair of the Conservation Committee for Audubon, and it's just evidence of my extensive passion for preservation and conservation and habitat maintenance. And then third is my desire to serve the city. With my retirement, I have the freedom of time that I didn't have heretofore, and I am pursuing passions that really mean great deal to me beyond higher education, and that is in the area of stream systems, stream restoration, rehabilitation, preservation, conservation, and the like. I also believe that my skills as an academic leader could benefit the committee. I'm a consensus builder. I like working with people, and I think I have a proven track record of that in this city. And then finally, you had queried about committee priorities. I'm not going to presume to know the details of those priorities at this point in time other than I would champion and advance the mission and purpose of the Creeks Advisory Committee, and to champion what I believe is fundamentally true, and that is that our watersheds and our streams impact everyone's life, our tourists, our residents, our visitors, and I just want to do what I can to ensure that they are preserved for the future. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez has a question.
Yes.
It's more of a comment. You had me at university president, and when you went fluvial whatchamacallit, that was like piling on.
Question window about that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have two other applicants in the audience. Ms. Owens, I see you out there, and Ms. Rizzo Santino, come on up. Thanks. Yep. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Penny Owens. I'm actually just completing my first term on the Creeks Advisory Committee, so I would be returning for a second term. I've greatly enjoyed my time serving the work and supporting the the mission of the Creeks Division over the last few years, and I'd be honored to serve another term. I have a background in biology. I'm very familiar with water quality and water quality monitoring, environmental education, and community outreach, and feel that those combined can help further the Creeks Creek, well, it's the Creeks Advisory Committee, supporting the important work of the Creeks Division. So if you have any questions for me, I'll keep it short.
Questions? I don't see any lights. Thank you, Ms. Owens. Ms. Rizzo Santino.
Good evening, Mayor Mario and esteemed city council. Again, my name is Ana Rosa Rizzo Santino. I'm a graduate of UC Santa Barbara. In 2002, double majored in Global Studies and Chicano Studies. I've been a community organizer for 20 years within the labor movement, in the interfaith movement with students, and I feel like the Creeks are such a crucial part of our community, and it's really important for us to do outreach in the Latino community within Santa Barbara. There's not a ton of diversity in the Creeks Committee, so I think I would be definitely bringing that. And this is kind of like a second homecoming because I was executive director of Pueblo before it became part of CAZ. And so I'm just happy to be back and do everything that I can to further the environmental movement here in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Very nice. No questions. Thanks. So that's it for Creeks Advisory, Fire, and Police Commission? Is anyone out there? No. Harbor Commission? Historic Landmarks Commission? Go ahead first, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Mario and council members. I'm a Santa Barbara native. My name is Wendy Edmonds. My both sets of grandparents moved here in the '40s, and my parents moved here after Korea, and so I went to local schools and was able to return after college. I retired in 2009 from Santa Barbara Bank and Trust, where I had been vice president and senior trust officer for a long time, and became licensed as a California fiduciary. So I have a practice that I work from home. I live on the Lower Riviera. And I happened to come downtown to a meeting with a friend of mine, and I met Mayor Mario in the hallway. I don't know if you remember that, but
I do.
A couple months ago. And you said to me, after chatting with my friend, "Are you a Santa Barbara resident?" And I said, "Yes, actually, I am." And since I have this opportunity to meet with you, which was spur of the moment, I said, "I want to tell you about this passion I have for our historic altar rail walls." And so I sort of took off on that. And so if you don't know what an altar rail wall is, it's our stone guardrails that are in and out of the Lower Riviera. And so I moved to the Lower Riviera after losing my house in the T-Fire, and have a wonderful old Spanish Revival, and I have an altar rail wall that I can see from my house. And then there's a lot of altar rail walls that are covered in vines and are being destroyed, and neighbors have built fences. And so we have some beautiful ones, and we have some that need to be preserved. So I made a presentation to the Historic Landmarks Committee about two years ago, and through that presentation, with the help of Nicole Hernandez, I've been able to have every property in Santa Barbara with an altar rail wall on it tagged, so that if the resident decides to do some improvements and apply for a permit, they're required to restore their wall. So I'm quite proud of that. And so when we had our hallway meeting, and you asked me if I was a Santa Barbara resident, I actually left and thought, "I shouldn't be doing more." So I, right now, I serve as the treasurer of the Riviera Association, and Sheila Lodge is a member with me. And so she sent me an email with the suggestion that I look at this committee. So hence the reason I am here. I would be delighted to do more for my community, and I so appreciate having lived here all this time, and I'm passionate for our old buildings.
All right. And that expression you're using, altar rail?
Altar rail.
Altar rail. Okay.
They sort of look like this. It's like the altar rail in church that you would go up to.
Oh, I do. I know altar rail. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ms. Edmonds.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks.
I see a couple of people. Mr. Uli, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Robert Uli. I'm an architect in town, in fact, the county architect. Many of you know. I'm interested in HLC primarily because most of my background is in historic structures, and I'm privileged to lead part of the stewardship team of the county courthouse, and have a thorough knowledge of the Department of Interior Standards that apply to various historic structures. Recently, I was elevated to College of the Fellows with the American Institute of Architects, and part of that story had to do with the conservation work at the courthouse. We're also privileged in that work to be a three-time award winner of the Governor's Award for Historic Preservation. So I have a thorough passion of historic preservation and a thorough knowledge of how that implements on the ground, and would be privileged to serve on that commission if you so please.
Any questions for Mr. Uli? We're good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Historic Landmarks Commission? This is a popular one. Ms. Reyes.
I'm Judy Reyes. Previously, I've served for 12 years on the City Planning Commission, and I'm currently serving on the HLC. I know this town very well, having lived here for 59 years. I have a degree in botany with minor works in archaeology. I have served and been employed as a research associate at the University of California for 58 years, and trained as a scientist. I know how to seek out facts, look at information, and plan for the future. I belong to various organizations in the town that are responsible for historic preservation. And recently, I've been, because of our sabbatical moves at the university, I've had the privilege and also the challenge of living in countries of Japan, Denmark, England, and in the Bronx, which is not, of course, it's in our country. So I know the problems of density with families and no car and carrying groceries. And so when we see projects coming in front of us at landmarks, I strive to make sure that there are balconies, open space, patios, plazas, someplace where the children can go, because you may say, "Oh, that's only going to be rented to one worker," but you can't say that tomorrow they can't move in with a couple of children, and they have to be accommodated. So when projects come in front of us at landmarks, I look at it from the standpoint of limibility and protection of residents and future residents who are going to move in. I also am very sensitive to neighbors and projects that are structures of merit, and make sure that they are treated sensitively with projects that are around it. I recognize that historic preservation and historic Santa Barbara is something that means our tourist industry, and it's important to us. So I'm striving to protect our history, but at the same time, provide the needs for our economy. What I would like to accomplish in the next four years is to get the ordinance ready, done, that we have been working on for five years, and get that completed. And then we will have more protection, because when we have an ordinance that is written, then the developer knows what we want, and we can have very clearly stated what we want in projects, and it makes it for a better system and a better production. I worked on the El Pueblo Viejo book. I worked on the El Pueblo Viejo book. I was somewhat responsible for the poster that you see of the city of Santa Barbara, and I believe strongly that preservation is very important. I spent nine months of my life working to move the Hunt-Stombach House. It was going to be demolished for a fire station, and it was moved up Cliff Drive onto Coronel Street. And that was one of the most exciting and rewarding moments of my life, to see that house, 72 tons was the main structure, move up the street and being preserved, and it is now a landmark. And so it's part of our history, and I want to keep it. If you have any questions on-
Questions for Ms. Reyes? Thank you.
Oh, okay, I couldn't, sorry.
All right. I saw one more person back there. Historic Landmarks Commission?
Hello, my name is Wayne Nemec, and I'd like to thank you guys for interviewing me tonight. I'm a landscape designer working at Van Aden Associates Landscape Architecture. I live in the city of Santa Barbara, and am privileged to call this municipality my home. The reason why I would like to be appointed to the HLC is to help preserve the history, culture, and identity of El Pueblo Viejo Landmark District, while taking it into a new era for future residents and visitors to appreciate. That is why I admire the role of the HLC and wish to be a part of it. The HLC is responsible for protecting the buildings and sites that are culturally, historically, and aesthetically significant by designating them landmarks within our community. I know the purpose of the HLC is to review and approve or disapprove plans for any new developments or alterations to existing buildings and properties within the landmark district. By doing this, the HLC is able to preserve Santa Barbara's core identity and have it persistent to the future. Since graduating from Landscape Architecture Program at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, I have been working on achieving my goal to become a licensed landscape architect. I have a love for past styles and events, and I've taken classes and studied extensively about Californian architectural history. I'm intrigued by the Spanish colonial revival style that Santa Barbara adopted after the 1925 earthquake, with the help of Ms. Pearl Chase. I believe this style is instrumental to development of both the city and the state of California's cultural identity. Beyond my love of architectural design and history, I believe that I can help bring new ideas to the Historic Landmarks Commission by making El Pueblo Viejo more relatable and exciting for the next generation to come. I've also worked on preparing HLC plan submissions at my current job, and I'm familiar with the general process of the HLC. I'm willing and able to devote the time necessary to serve if appointed. A major goal I have is to help make the process easy for both the city and business owners to get projects passed and moving forward. As we know, downtown has been going through a flux of businesses coming in and out due to various issues such as internet retail. I believe that with our help, we can get downtown back on track while retaining its historical and aesthetic identity. Again, I thank you for this interview.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Mr. Hart has a question for you.
Yeah, what do you think is the most pressing issue that the HLC faces?
Well, I think, I think an issue that, not necessarily an issue, but I think what the HLC needs to do is help protect the history of a community, but not just keep it stale. And just because protecting, protecting history doesn't mean keeping the same. Protecting history should also go with going into the future, because if you just stay stale, you stay in a time lock. And I don't think we should stay in a time lock, because if we stay in a time lock, nothing will happen. And I believe it's important to keep that, but look at the new, and make sure the new is an integral part of the past, and keep, just make it work harmoniously, instead of just keeping it in the past. And so that's what I see.
Good. Anyone else for HLC? We'll move up to Library Board. Ms. Sneddon?
Let me ask a general question.
Uh huh.
So if, if an applicant hasn't shown up for an interview, then they're not-
They can't be considered. They might show up while we're here.
Okay.
Maybe they're home watching TV. Sometimes people do that.
Okay, thank you.
Library Board? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Paul Fleischer. I love libraries. I work in the library as a library technician at City College, and I want to be a part of this board to help shape it, and to, they evolve very quickly, libraries do, and I've never addressed city council before. I just think it's a very important place. It's a place to, it's an unconditional friend. It's, it doesn't judge, its walls don't judge, it embraces everybody, it's comforting, it cools you on a hot day. Those are some of the reasons that I enjoy libraries. I mean, I go to, it's my home away from home. I literally go to the public library when I leave the library, three days a week at least. So, my background, I have eight years working in a library setting as a library technician. So, and I have a, because I've been going since I was a kid, I have a very good perspective of what it's like to work behind the desk and work, and be the person in front. So I think that perspective would really help the ever-evolving library. And thank you for considering me, and it would be an honor to be on that board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good. Anyone else for Library Board? Measure P Committee? Neighborhood Advisory Council? Parks and Recreation Commission? Planning Commission? Is that a taker? Mr. Higgins, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Jay Higgins. I've been on the Planning Commission for four years, and I'd like to continue for another term. A little bit about me, I've been here for 30 years in Santa Barbara, two kids in public schools, a bachelor's degree, master's degree. My day job is actually as a land use planner, both public and private sector, and so in that regard, I've really enjoyed a big perspective shift as a planning commissioner, and I think it is helpful to have somebody on the commission that has some good nuts and bolts experience, particularly when the planning commission is looking at adopting or refining new codes. And we did that in a big way with the new zoning ordinance a couple of years ago. Couple of big issues we faced the last few years on the commission, bikes, parking, and housing. Well, we think we hit two out of three pretty well, successfully. Bike master plan, we continue to harp on applicants to include more bike parking in their projects. Certainly, the NZO did a great job of handling parking in our restaurant properties downtown, and also unlocked a lot of discrepancies that, or conflicts that occurred between staff and applicants, and so that was very helpful. But jury's out on housing. Maybe it's not something that we will actually ever solve, given our history with growth and anxiety over that. But I do think there's some progress to be made in terms of compatibility and process. I do think we ought to be pressing in on housing in our downtown corridor, if there's a market for that, or demand for that. I think it'd be a very useful economic development tool that we should have in our toolbox as well. So, you've heard it a couple of times here, but let me just finish really quickly with something that's been kicked around for too long, and that's how we identify and protect our historic resources in this city. I'd like to think there's maybe a way for the city planning commission to play a role and provide some leadership on that. You know, the American Planning Association just finished up another very successful Citizens Planning Academy. We didn't market it hardly at all. Had about 70 people show up and pay to take these classes, and a lot of them were very young urban professionals. So, it got me thinking that, you know, there's maybe some untapped resources here in the city for learning, and particularly with the younger demographic, and maybe we take the subject, just one subject, in a planning academy-type format, and really do a sort of intensive analysis of historic resources in districts, focus workshops, maybe even go off campus and travel to some places that have historic districts that are working, and then bring that back in a re-energized way through our design review boards, and our planning commission, work with staff, and really kick that thing in the right direction, and see if we can't move the needle on something, you know, with a greater capacity or significance in our city. I think it's definitely about time. So, that to me sounds like a very exciting process for somebody with my background on the planning commission. I'd certainly like to be around for that. And if you don't have any questions, I'll just, I'll close with, you know, I've learned a heck of a lot over the last four years. It's been a pleasure serving with you all and with my fellow planning commissioners. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Sneddon has a question?
Hi, Ms. Higgins. What do you see as the biggest challenge with the planning commission and how to address that?
So, there are a lot of them, but, you know, obviously, the big, the big issue, I won't say it's low-hanging fruit, but it's housing and how we handle that. I don't think we're going to solve it, but we ought to have clearer rules about where we want it and where we don't. We sort of have those rules, but it caused a lot of anxiety, and I think that's a symbol, or that's a sign that it was never really warmly embraced when it came through the general plan, that that can happen. So, clarifying that, maybe making some amendments to AUD, or a different kind of an AUD or housing incentive program that's just downtown. I certainly think there's been a lot of procedural hangups with whether or not the planning commission reviews housing projects, or whether or not the design review board does. The design review boards are maybe overcapacity with regard to some of the typical land use issues that the planning commission centers itself around, so that may be a place to focus.
Anyone else for Planning Commission? Come on up.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Jamie Dufek, and I'm a new applicant. First, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. I want to dive right in, as I know we're limited on time, and there are three items that I felt I didn't fully express in the cover letter that I put with my application. First is my unique skill set. I may not seem like the obvious person to pick for this role, and I think that that's exactly why you should appoint me. I have the ability to attack and address complicated situations, and am not intimidated by complex problems and intricate systems. I have a curious mindset towards areas that I'm not an expert in, and feel that I would complement the vast amount of knowledge and expertise that already sits in the room. As I look at some of the items that are brought to the commission, I get excited about diving into the projects being proposed from a lens of someone who attributes to the process that was started in the early 20s to shape the community of Santa Barbara. In a recent meeting, Commissioner Schwartz brought up a recommendation around assisting the public around process when a community member brought a concern around units being built on the east side. That's an example of something that I could instantly contribute to. I'm limited on time, but I also want to note that I'm interested in the progression and learning more about the new police station being proposed. I'm very, very excited about this opportunity, and that being said, I do not take it lightly. If I were standing near your shoes, one of the biggest red flags I would be asking is, does this woman who works full-time and is active in the community have time for this? Does she know what's involved and take it seriously? And what I want you to walk away with is confidence that I am the type of person that does not commit to something on the fly. I've put time and consideration into this, I've been transparent with my employer. Two years ago, I was volunteering in nonprofits, working full-time, and fully engaged in an accelerated full-time MBA program. I'm not afraid of a learning curve, I'm a fast reader and quick at processing information, and am fully committed to the responsibilities of the committee. Finally, in closing, I, as a contributor to the community of Santa Barbara, have interests that I support, and my position on the commission is not to fuel that. My desire to be on the commission is because I'm interested in the well-being and health of the community, and taking part in a process that navigates proposed projects that ultimately shape the city and the community that we live in as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions, Ms. Sneddon?
Just like to be consistent and ask you what you see as the biggest challenges for the planning commission and how you would address them.
Yeah. I think the biggest, biggest issues are what is, will be consistently coming forth in projects. That is, in a singular instance, as well as looking as a whole over the course of time, what keeps being proposed as projects. And so I think that there are obvious ones around housing, how transportation relates to that, especially affordable housing, and I'm not sure that there's a singular one right now, but it's something that we have to gather and see what the community is actually bringing forth as proposed projects, and how those ultimately shape the future of what Santa Barbara looks like.
Thanks. Anyone else for Planning Commission? Rental Housing Mediation Board? Welcome.
Good evening, council members and Ms. Mayor. I'm here on my application for the mediation board. I make this application because I think it's important to stay involved with the community and to-
What's your name again?
Oh, it's Ray Olmstead, excuse me.
Ray Olmstead, thank you.
Yes, uh huh. I, I've been retired for about the last five or six years, and during that period of time, I have put some energy into the community. I've just recently termed out as a member of the Board of Trustees for COME, which is a very busy board. They give us lots to do. So I have time, having such time, when I aged out in June, I looked through online material from the city to see what sorts of programs are available, commissions and boards, and I found this rental housing mediation board, and I thought that my background and experience would lend some, a bill, or lend the board, I could offer something with my background and material, excuse me. I grew up here in Santa Barbara, I graduated from Santa Barbara High School, I graduated from UCSB, and then I left town. I was a practicing attorney for some 35 years until I retired five, six years ago. Most of my time as an attorney was in Sonoma County, where I was a bankruptcy practitioner. During that period of time, practicing law in Sonoma County, I volunteered to the courts. I was appointed from time to time as an arbitrator. Also, for some 15 years while I was there, I volunteered with the courts, and I was a small claims judge, probably one time a month over those 15 years. Needless to say, landlord tenant matters often came up before me as a judge in the small claims court. I have not been tutored in mediation, however, I have participated in a number of mediations as an advocate for my client. There is a program in, under the bankruptcy rules called the Bankruptcy Dispute Resolution Program, where we have trained, trained mediators, and we, if the court thinks it's important, or if the parties think it's important, they can have their matter referred to a mediator. So I, I don't have, like I say, background or education as a mediator, but I look forward to that type of education that I believe this board is supposed to be offering to us.
They do, yeah.
To me, yes, as a member of that board. I've gone through the online materials for the board, I see that there, there have been some mediation training sessions at certain of the meetings, although there really have not been that many meetings that I see this year. I'm not quite sure why that is, I think I need to get involved more in order to find out.
I can tell you that sometimes they resolve the matters without having a formal mediation, which is really cool. And so, when they do have one, it means they needed to get to that place with a formal mediation.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's why.
I guess that's, I guess that's why it is, yes.
It's a good thing, yeah.
So, I have the time, I think I have the ability, I have the- I have the background, and I'd like to offer my services to the city as a member of this board.
Questions for Mr. Olmstead, Ms. Sneddon?
I just have a clarifying question. Did you say recently termed out of the Board of Calm or Calm?
Calm, the Board of Trustees of Calm shall abuse learning. I know the mayor is very familiar with it.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Rental housing mediation board? I see a couple of people out there. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janet Eastman, and I am applying to be on the rental housing mediation board. I have been a property manager for 20 years in residential property management, and I've also had participated in some mediations in that role successfully. And about a year ago, I did a certificate course with the Conflict Solution Center in Santa Barbara to become a, to resolve conflicts. And I'm very nervous in this format. I admire everybody who went before me and spoke so smoothly and, and prepared so well. I, I thought you were going to be asking me questions, so I just kind of prepared answers. But, yeah, I like helping people. I like resolving, helping people solve problems. And in my role as a property manager, that's probably been the most rewarding thing, is when residents call and they're upset, and I can listen to them. And I find that once people are able to express themselves and feel heard, the problem often gets resolved because they're willing to take responsibility, do what needs to be done, calm down, and they walk away feeling positive. And that's what attracts me about mediation, is that both parties get to feel satisfaction. And it's not in a court setting, and it, it's just such a great alternative to litigation, which is so stressful and so emotional. And I've been through it too, just as a, you know, an adjunct, not an owner, but as a manager. And I think that's it.
Well done.
Would love to help.
Yeah, no, well done. We all hate public speaking, actually. Any questions? We're good.
Thanks.
Come on up.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Cory Baker, and I am applying for the Mediation Task Force. Like Mr. Olmstead, I am an attorney. I went to UCSB. I thought he was reading off my resume. But I do have some mediation training. I went to Pepperdine Law School, and they have the Strauss program, so I took extensive courses, 25-plus units just in mediation. I was in the clinic there, the mediation clinic, and spent time in the unlawful detainer courts. That's tenancy and landlord issues, straight out. When I moved back to Santa Barbara, I wanted to find a way to continue that because I had such a passion for it. And having completed 40 mediations on my own in the unlawful detainer courts, I thought I could do the same here. I spoke with Ms. Bifano, and she got me really jazzed about it. And I just wanted to find a way to communicate to the public that I'm here for them, resolve their issues, and serve the community. Thank you.
Great. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rental housing mediation board, one more at least.
Hello, good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Rigoberto Gutierrez. I'm here to interview for the rental housing mediation board. I, my experience, I've been in Santa Barbara since 2007. When I graduated UCSB, 2013, I became a community organizer for cause, and I was educating the Latino community around tenant rights. I've worked with the rental mediation task force staff a lot, and I really like what they do. Thank you for continuing funding that program. I think it's very important in our city, as we see a lot of our Latino communities getting pushed out. I'm bilingual. I also, I think I bring a lot of skills about resolving conflict. I really like to resolve conflict in order to keep the tenancy of the tenant, especially your vulnerable tenants. Sometimes some of these issues are caused by, like, you know, tenant not getting along. And so also in my current capacity as with the Housing Authority, I work as a resident coordinator there, and I'm also onsite coordinator, so I'm a property manager. So I firsthand deal with these kind of issues there, and so I bring that also, that experience. Any questions? I'm a little nervous up here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else rental housing mediation board? We're to the Santa Barbara Youth Council. Applicants? Couple here. Good. Welcome.
All right. Hello, Madam Mayor and other members of the city council. My name is Julia Minor. I'm 14, and I'm currently in ninth grade at Anacapa School. I would like to be appointed to the Santa Barbara Youth Council for several reasons. My life experiences, passion for justice, and desire to create recreational activities for teens in Santa Barbara. I as well believe that this would be such an amazing way to learn about leadership and local government firsthand. I have lived in several states. I was born in Santa Barbara, moved to Oakland, Chicago, then Boston, and now, lo and behold, I am back in Santa Barbara. Because I have lived in so many different areas, I have seen how different places govern themselves. Currently, I live downtown, just a few blocks off of State Street. These experiences give me lots of ideas for what we can do for Santa Barbara to make it thrive as much as possible. Secondly, things that are unjust bother me greatly. If I were to be appointed, I would try to make Santa Barbara as fair and equal as possible. I want Santa Barbara to be a place where everyone has a shot and is not discriminated on their color, sex, religion, or anything else. I want people to be treated fairly. As well, I want to help the people who want help. I want Santa Barbara to be a place where a teenager can be the best they can be. With that will come loyalty to the city, happiness, and different perspectives. Thirdly, because I am a teenager, I have a phone. And since I have a phone, I'm on social media a lot of the time. But this takes away from building social skills and developing strong relationships with peers. I believe by providing recreational activities for teens, we can better help make them build social skills and relationships with their peers. I will, I will bring creative ideas to make Santa Barbara a happier, safer, thriving community or city. This is such an important and valuable opportunity for teenagers to have a platform to voice their ideas and concerns in a powerful way. Because of this great opportunity to be able to provide input to the city council, I would invest the necessary time to fulfill my role. I thank you for, sorry, I thank you for your consideration and time. Any questions?
Very good. I don't see any. You gave us a thorough presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Sneddon has a question.
Thank you for applying. I just had a question. Are you in high school?
Yeah, I'm in ninth grade.
You're in ninth grade?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else youth council? I saw someone in the back. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Marco Palmerin. I'm a senior at La Cuesta High School. I'm very grateful to have this opportunity and chance to represent my community. I'm willing to devote my time and effort, if appointed, to the Board of Santa Barbara Youth Council. I know the Santa Barbara Youth Council would benefit having me on the team because I have a great communication skills. I'm motivated to see positive change in my community. I see a lot of ignorance and misinformed people who feel like this community needs a leader, and I am willing to be that leader. I'm interested in promoting a healthy lifestyle amongst our community, considering the fact that obesity rates have risen to 6.4 percent, up from 18.7 percent in 2000, in the year 2000. Teens nowadays are going to corner stores and eating junk food, which include cancer-causing chemicals like yellow five and red 40, instead of making healthy meals for themselves at home. I'm also interested in politics. I find the topic extremely interesting. I feel we need to heavily educate ourselves because it is a subject that affects us all. I think it is important for teens to be involved in youth leadership because young people are being influenced by so-called artists with dreams and aspirations who do unspeakable, who commit unspeakable acts and are obsessed with materialistic objects instead of real connections, knowledge, and self-improvement. Thank you for your time and consideration as a candidate for the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Any questions for Mr. Palmerin Pena? You say it? Mr. Gutierrez?
What grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else youth council? One more back there. And what's your name?
My name is Sean Brofel. Good afternoon, mayor and rest of Santa Barbara City Council. I am a senior at La Cuesta High School. I am applying for the position of youth council for my school, La Cuesta. I am willing to put in the time and devote the two days, I think it is a month, to come to the meetings. The topic I want to be more informed about and help around the city is mental, mental health issues, because I've been seeing and I've been doing a lot of research on America's pretty much anxiety and depression rates skyrocketing in the past couple of years. Sorry, I'm a little off. I have been, I've been my school's ambassador, one of them, since I started going there my junior year. And from what I've heard, my teachers and other administrators say I do a good job at representing La Cuesta and what we try to show the kids. I do see I am a good candidate for this position because I feel like I'm a good listener. I can talk to students very easily, and I feel like I can get the kind of barrier out of the way between the adults and the students. So if there's any questions, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez has a question for you.
You mentioned mental health illness, and that's a very important issue. Any ideas what we can do as a city or community, or what the youth council might look at?
What I have been seeing is that a lot of people do not take mental health very seriously. It is, I want to say, the most important thing from birth till 25, pretty much your whole life, and it can affect your life, like, very drastically. So I feel like just talking about it, making it more a serious issue and more topic to talk about to younger students would be a great start, pretty much.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other youth council applicants? We'll move on then to sign committee? Thanks. It is late, yeah, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Lawrence Baba Hikian, and I am applying to the sign committee.
Thank you.
I bring several years of experience as a sign maker, sign designer, and a sign installer in Santa Barbara, and the tri-county, actually. Being a sign applicant for years, I have vast experience with the permit application process. And I'm very familiar with the sign committee and their format, the way they meet, and as I have attended the, their meetings as an applicant myself. And combined with my knowledge of the Santa Barbara sign ordinance, I believe I can bring a positive experience to the committee and support them in processing permit applications and ensure signs are conforming to the ordinance guidelines. In particular, I was the one who personally helped Ms. Johnson with the creation of the sign template for the pop-up initiative recently and in the EPV district. And we are already helping some of the startups with their signage. And finally, I know Mr. Sorgman personally. I have, and Mr. Eng. I have worked with Mr. Sorgman prior to his retirement, Mr. Sorgman being the current chair of the sign committee. And, and I frequently communicate with Mr. Eng in regards to permit applications. I would be honored to have the opportunity to work with them and become a valuable asset in the committee.
All right. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else for sign committee? Sister Cities Board? Transportation and Circulation Committee? Hi, Mr. Green.
Hello. Madam Mayor, council. I have been on the transportation committee for two and a half years, like to renew, but you have a small problem. There are five applicants and four positions, but we have a vacancy that has been announced. One of the current members, not the set you're dealing with, is moving out of town. And so perhaps with some degree of manipulation or operation by the council or administrator, you could actually appoint the fifth person.
We cannot, Mr. Green. That, that's not how the process works. We'll have to wait until the next cycle. It's, it sounds good, but there's a process, so.
Fine.
It's not fair for people if you don't tell them how many openings there are.
Okay, well, it was just a thought that-
Not bad, not bad.
Would be nice to have.
Thanks.
A fifth member, although we don't have dissension. There's, I think, only been one or two votes that have not been unanimous out of that committee because we get very good staff's work from Rob Dayton and from Derek Bailey. So it's pretty easy to work with. We drill down on topics. Vision Zero was one of the recent ones that we drilled down on. You all have jumped in and approved that very nicely. Thank you. I did use some statistical analysis of the Vision Zero materials we had. One of the pages showed the breakout of fatalities, being 50% pedestrian. It was interesting to see that 40% of the incidents revolved around right-of-way and turns, 20% on DUI or a hit-and-run. Those are scary numbers, but we're working on it, and the staff is applying. Another issue that we've touched tangentially on, high on your agenda, is alternate transportation. Bicycles, bike sharing, zip cars, scooters. Big issue, needs focus, we're into it. One of the biggest problems we're facing is a 10-year future for the state widening of 101 south of us and delivering new cars, new vehicles to town. One of the deficiencies, which I pointed out in response to the state draft, was that they are offsetting the decrease in afternoon buildup delays going south to mitigate against the increased traffic that we're going to have in the mornings. And that's something that I think council, the council, needs to try to push on because that's a kind of unfair. And the biggest problem, if we were asked for a problem, is the budget. Staff has to go out and beg money from the state. They're very efficient at it, but you all can help. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there questions for Mr. Green? Okay, thanks. Did everyone in the audience get a chance to come up and speak? Okay. Good. Okay. Well, we'll close that item then, and we'll adjourn our meeting. It's been a, a long day. Oswald DeRoz has passed away, a prominent member of our community, and Van Hamilton is a well-known doctor, and so we'll adjourn our meeting in their, in their memories. Thank you.